All right, thank you. Seeing that our board members are all present in our new arrangement here, we'll begin the second day of the July meeting, which is a study session, and call the meeting to order at 8:31 a.m. This is a study session of the Board to really think about where are we? Where have we been? Where should we be organizing ourselves to go in the context of all of the education work in California? Because it's a study session, the board members in attendance will take no action on any items. Vice President Glover Woods will be discussing the day's overview in more detail shortly, but the meeting will include some activities involving the Board as a whole, as well as small group discussions involving the board members. Members of the public may observe the small group discussions from chairs set around the edge of the room, which have been limited due to public health considerations. The meeting will be live streamed, and public comment may be made via email, phone, or in person in accordance with our public comment guidelines. So Item 17 is the study session on "The California Way: Policies Designed for School and Student Success, Accomplishments, Future Work, and Perspectives from California's Local Education Agencies and Other States." And I'd like to turn it over to Vice President Glover Woods for her initial comments and the overview of the day.
Thank you, President Darling-Hammon, and good morning, everyone. Just so excited about today's study session. Just a very quick overview of what the day will look like. We are going to start with a presentation about the California Way, really to give us an opportunity to look at what has been done and what things are currently in place. And today, board members, you're going to find that the day is anchored with really two panel presentations, peppered in with some reflection that you'll have an opportunity to do. So our first panel is going to be a panel of superintendents from the state of California. They will share with you some innovations they have been able to support and implement within their districts. And they will give you presentations about the district, and then we'll engage in a short panel discussion with all three of them, and there'll be an opportunity for you to ask maybe a question or two during that time. Once that's done, we'll go into a small group conversation at each of our individual tables to reflect upon what we have heard. The next panel presentation you'll hear is going to be from leaders in other states that have gone down that road of innovation as well, who have been able to do some things at the state level in really ensuring that we are providing support to the whole child, looking at how we can do things in such a way that are aligned to 21st century learning and where we know schools should be. Dr. -- I'm like, what is her name? No, I'm sorry. Dr. Darling-Hammon is going to facilitate that piece. I'm like, who are you? Dr. Darling-Hammon is going to facilitate that conversation with leaders from the state of Kentucky, as well as New York. And again, you'll have opportunity to do, ask a couple of questions. We're going to go back into a small group reflection and be able to, again, reflect on what we've heard and talk about what we may see as some potential areas of next steps for areas of focus. So that's what the day is going to look like. Little bit of presentation, little bit of reflection, and we will have some time to share out a bit as well. So looking forward to the morning, everyone. And I will turn it back over to the person whose name I really do know, Dr. Linda Darling-Hammon.
The doctor stuff is what gets you off course. Well, so we, you know, as you could tell from Cynthia's remarks, we're really trying to set some goals here for ourselves, like where are we and where should we be going? And, you know, a lot of state board work is things that come to us that need to be handled because they're part of the way that, you know, all the different rules and laws and programs are set up. But we're also in a really intense time in American public education and in California public education. And thinking, taking the time to think about where are we and what do we think are the big goals that we should be setting for ourselves is really, this is the first of several study sessions, and we want to begin that process now. So just to give us a little history, you know, back in the 1970s, California built what was thought of as one of the nation's strongest education systems in the country. Then we enacted Proposition 13 in 1979, and we had three decades of increasingly severe budget cuts. By the year 2004, John Marrow, who was a filmmaker, did a film on California called "From First to Worst" and documented the very sad state of everything, facilities and all of the elements of education in the state. Is that showing up? Okay, good. It's not showing up as well here. By 2010, about, you know, a decade and a half ago, we were one of the lowest-spending states in the country, 46th, one of the most unequally resourced and segregated states for students, the first-most segregated state for Latinx students and the fourth-most segregated state for Black students, 50th in the ratios of pupils to teachers, administrators, and counselors. We were in the bottom five states on every student achievement measure and graduation and so on, 46th in eighth-grade reading, 48th in eighth-grade math, 49th in eighth-grade science. So we had really sort of turned California into what we often would have thought of as a southern state, where there had been few education investments. It did begin to change shortly thereafter. Jerry Brown took office in 2011 and came in with a different agenda. Mike Kurz was the Chair of the Board. Tom Toyluxon was the State Superintendent. And we had, and I'm blocking on his name, but you all know who he is. Thank you. Bill Honig, who had been State Superintendent, came back and was part of the Instructional Quality Commission. And my good friend Mike Kurz Duffin calls this "The Rise of the Septuagenarians." They did come in with a lot of experience and had been through that process of, you know, decline. In fact, Jerry Brown was there when Proposition 13 passed and had to do the first state budget cut. So they, they came in with an agenda to begin to sort of try to fix that. They did launch an entirely different path. We had a new, of course, progressive funding plan with LCFF, which has put both more money into the system and put it into the system in much more equitable ways, a new accountability strategy. The eight state priorities were identified. As part of the LCFF legislation, the dashboard then emerged from that. LCAP was designed to guide the investments with community participation. There was more of a focus on support rather than sanctions. We had had a very punitive accountability system previously. New approach to governance. There was an attempt to be more coherent in state direction, at least around the standards, the curriculum frameworks, and the new assessments, but with a lot of local decision-making. And you know that the multiple-measures approach that we took on actually preceded the permission from the federal government to do it. We just went ahead and did it, and then they caught on. And we began to look not only at test scores, but at other kinds of outcomes, at student engagement, school climate, curriculum access. This is a result of the Williams lawsuit that had come about because of the severe inequalities and access to everything, teachers, materials, facilities, curriculum. Implementation of the Common Core was actually one of the eight priorities and parent involvement. And as you know, we've been working from this, you know, with the dashboard and lots of accountability measures since. During that next decade, actually, LCFF didn't actually start to get, didn't get passed until 2013 and didn't get really implemented until 2015. But really, even over that little bit of time, we had the largest gains in the country in eighth-grade reading. We went from 46th in eighth-grade reading to the national average over the course of that period of time. We were one of three states with the largest gains in fourth-grade reading. Of course, you know, we had lots of room to grow, so it makes it easier. We had very substantial gains in fourth and eighth-grade math, although we continue to have math as an area of significant concern. And then we saw particularly large gains for low-income students and those in districts receiving concentration grants. And several economists in California, Rucker Johnson, Julian LaFautaine, have done studies that have documented how substantial those gains were as a result of the LCFF funding. The graduation rate has dramatically increased from the last, over that last period of time. The funding increases have also continued. And in this administration, there's been another 30% increase in the amount of funding going through the LCFF to districts. So we are now slightly above the national average in funding. And we were, you know, down at the very bottom just a little bit, just a decade ago. So there's been a lot of change in a relatively short period of time. But meanwhile, you know, there's a lot more that we know we need to do. This administration has taken a whole-child approach, trying to point resources at pupil needs in many ways beyond the LCFF formula. All the federal money we brought in was really focused on pupil needs and on equity principles. Trying to move towards a more 21st-century curriculum and assessment system, which focuses more on higher-order thinking skills and problem-solving, trying to invest in skilled teachers and leaders, creating the possibility for wraparound supports with community schools, and bringing early childhood education online in a much more systematic way. So the system has begun to change. We now have an Early Start for Children with expanded PK and universal TK. We have expanded learning time before and after in summer school. We have more than 2,000 community schools across the state. Health and mental health supports are supported. There are supported on-ramps for teaching that did not exist before in terms of service scholarships and residencies and Grow Your Own programs. The California Leadership Academy was sort of brought back. We now have the 21st Century Leadership Academy. One of the many programs California had started, it was successful. Other states adopted it, and then we killed it. So that's been, it's been a pattern in California over the last 30 years, is, you know, start a good idea, other people pick it up, and then we don't continue it. And that's part of, I think, a goal for us. And there is a growing professional development infrastructure beginning to be built. So I would say, and you may think of other things that are not listed here. So I think as a result of those investments, California did lose less ground on national tests than other states during the pandemic. We saw continued increases in graduation rates. We lost less ground in math than most states. We held steady in reading, actually. We were one of the few states that did not fall backwards in reading. And LAUSD actually saw the largest gains nationally. I just want to tip my hat to Allison, who was doing a lot of the work in LAUSD at that time. And San Diego remained the top-performing urban district in the country in reading. So, you know, we, we have suffered, to be sure, and our kids have suffered, but we also had some buffer that other states didn't have because of those investments. The substantial challenges that certainly I see, and as we have our discussions and reflections, we can add to this, and you may think of other things you want to add, but we do have deepening poverty for children. Just in the last year, from 60% to 63% of tested students, we, the increase in the poverty rate of students taking the state test went up again. We'll probably soon be at 2/3 of our kids in poverty. We have had a growth in students experiencing homelessness and foster care in the last couple of years. We know about the mental health challenges. We know that chronic absenteeism is a concern. We know that declining enrollment is a concern, and some of that is demographics, and some of it's moving out of the very expensive state of California. But some of it is also students who don't feel that they can find their way in the schools that we have. And, you know, pods and homeschooling and things are also increasing. We have learning recovery needs. And then we have this rapidly changing knowledge economy that demands these new skills and deeper learning, and that should have implications for curriculum and assessment. And if, if you're keeping up with just the daily, you know, expansion of conversation about AI and its implications for us, you know, it's just startling. The California Healthy Kids surveys are done by, WestEd designed the surveys, and many, many districts use these surveys. And they periodically publish statewide estimates from a random sample that they select. They found that at the close of the pandemic, at least 40% of high school students did not experience caring adult relationships in school. Academic motivation had declined during the pandemic. Chronic sadness and hopelessness, the feeling that there's nothing for me, increased during the pandemic quite sharply. And then social-emotional distress also increased. Optimism decreased. Suicidal ideation has remained at, at high levels. We also see that in national data, 75% of high school students have only negative emotions to report about their schools. And the top three emotions are tired, stressed, and bored. And the California Healthy Kids survey has added a boredom metric because they found it so important to understand what was going on. And then meanwhile, we have knowledge growing exponentially. So starting around 2000, there was more new knowledge created in the world between 1999 and 2003 than in the entire history of the world preceding. Knowledge is now doubling faster than every year. So our kids are going to have to work with knowledge that hasn't been discovered yet, using technologies that haven't been invented yet, solving major problems that we have not managed to solve. So the world is changing at warp speed. You know, the technologies are a piece of it, the nature of work. Most of the jobs that will be available in 20 years won't, have not been invented yet. Many of the jobs, and I watch every week, the evidence of jobs disappearing that, you know, used to be done by people are now being done now by, you know, various forms of technology. Climate change is accelerating rapidly. Geopolitical conflict around us. Access to food, water, and safe places to live are going to be affected by all of that. And then the ability to invent and collaborate and problem-solve is really going to be like the essential skill for survival of individuals, societies, and the species. And it's happening at such a rapid pace, and schools are trying to figure out what to do about it. Across the country and in California, we see lots and lots of evidence and surveys that educators and parents are calling for schools, "School to Reinvent Schools," a little bit of a typo there. But the restarting and reinventing school is really beginning to be a theme, and it's one we haven't had an opportunity to really think and talk about at the Board. You know, the current schools that we have were designed in the 1900s, when Henry Ford's factory model was the design for schooling. It was picked up. It was, it was the modern thing to do in business and industry, and it became the modern thing to do in schools. And that meant putting kids on an assembly line and moving them in a standardized way across a trajectory. But it was not designed to support relationships. That was not any, there were, I read the history, and if you want to get into it, read David T. Ayk's "The One Best System" or Callahan's book on schools, "The Efficiency of Schools." But they never used the word "relationships." It was completely about getting kids stamped with a lesson as they moved along. They did not have a whole-child approach. They didn't, you know, think about 21st-century skills or deep learning. They thought that only about 5% of kids should be streamed off for some kind of thinking work and maybe go to college. And they expected lots of kids to drop out. There was not an idea that you should somehow try to get kids to learn. If they couldn't learn when you presented a lesson, they were expected to drop out and go in the factory, in the mills, because basically the idea was that the school should select and sort for the society. And it was decidedly not equitable. The eugenicists were operating at the same time to design different conveyor belts for kids by race and by class, very explicit. So that factory model was, as I say, organized for batch processing in large groups with standardized curriculum. Each teacher was an individual worker on the assembly line. And unlike other countries, our teachers have the least amount of time to be in collaborative work with one another and the least amount of planning time for that. So the idea is that, you know, your, the teacher's job is really just being in front of the kids. The pressure age grading system was adopted here, which means you get a different teacher every year. In many countries, kids stay with the same teacher for two or three or even four years. The Platoon system was the idea that the students should jump up every 45 minutes and rush to another classroom. It was not invented by a mother, I am quite sure of that. You know, ring a bell and have the kids, and 2,000 kids jump up and run to another part of the building and get stamped with another lesson. The tracking was designed largely by race and class to create different conveyor belts. And schools were explicitly designed to select and sort, as I said. So we see a lot of activity across the state, and we're going to hear from some of the leaders in our state that have been really working on an agenda to, you know, prepare kids for the century that we're in, for the world that they're going to encounter. And based on much of that, what we know from the new syntheses of the Science of Learning and Development, which show how important it is for kids to have positive developmental relationships as an extremely important part of the learning process, to be in environments filled with safety and belonging. It turns out that the best work that students do is when they have low threat and high supports, and they are being enabled to be respected and to be not stigmatized in any way. Think about all the stresses that often occur in schools. Those actually, we now know, shut down the learning process rather than opening it up. We know that rich learning experiences grounded in inquiry produce more knowledge development because we are inquiring beings. Everything that's been invented in the world is, you know, because of inquiring humans who said, "Well, what about this?" or "What about that?" Development of social-emotional skills, habits, and mindsets turns out to be incredibly important, both for academic success and beyond. And then integrated student supports, you know, the ways in which we support students to remove obstacles to learning, to be sure that they're able to learn. So that's the question for us to begin to think about today is how should we support our system for the next decade and beyond, given the amount of change that's going on and the, the ways in which our students need to be able to survive in this new world? So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Cynthia, who is going to introduce our panel. And we're going to hear from some superintendents who are doing some really extraordinary work and in the face of all of this, seeing dramatic improvements.
Thank you, Linda. Really appreciate you really framing where we're going to go this morning. And as I get ready to introduce to you the superintendents that will be sharing with us, I just want for us to anchor our thinking again around the whole-child approach that is really at the foundation of the California Way. And as has already been shared with you, we know that the factory model for schooling that we've all experienced ourselves and that our students are experiencing to this day is not the model that is going to bring the most student success for all students, considering, again, that changing field, you know, the new skills and deeper learning implications. We don't do things the way we used to, not even five years ago, let alone 10, 15, 20 decades ago. Thinking about the changing world and how we prepare our students for those jobs that we don't, we can't even conceptualize, things that don't even exist yet. Our world, again, as Dr. Darling-Hammon said, is forever-changing. So as we build upon the California Way and a lot of the great innovations and changes that have happened within our system since NCLB, we're really, it's really, I think, our moral obligation to ensure that we also look at how schooling needs to be reinvented and how we, as a Board, can support that reinventing at the local level. And just as I'm excited to say about the state of California, we have many districts that have already started along that path. And we're blessed enough to have three superintendents from three of the districts here with us today. So I'm going to introduce them to you. And as I do so, superintendents, if you would make your way over to the table you see to my right, that would be wonderful, and we'll get started with our panel discussion. So the first superintendent that I would like to introduce to you is Michael Matsuda. He is from Anaheim Union High School District. He is the superintendent of Anaheim Union High School District, which is located in northern Orange County, California. They serve approximately 28,000 students, 78% who are eligible for free and reduced meals, and 28, 24% who are English learners. Now, one of the, there are many wonderful things that are happening in Anaheim Union High School District. And under his leadership, he's built a new educational model incorporating reverse-engineered career pathways. They also have developed a graduate profile that didn't just stop at a graduate profile. It has evolved into an innovative Career Preparedness Systems Framework, which is an integrated approach to learning that catalyzes young people's engagement in school, fosters positive student relationships, and brings purpose and meaning to students' academic and career learning. So we are very excited to be able to hear from him in just a few moments. We also will hear from Dr. Darren Brawley from Compton Unified School District. He is the superintendent of that district, and Compton is located in Los Angeles, California. They serve approximately 26,000 students, 77% that are eligible for free and reduced meals, and 27% English learners. Under Dr. Brawley's leadership, Compton Unified School District was brought out of the brink of receivership and has benefited from a tremendous turnaround in student outcomes. Even while we were responding to the COVID pandemic, Compton was able to see improvement in academic areas for students. Most recently, Davis Middle School, which is located in the district, was named on the Top 10 Short List for the Best School Prizes 2024 for Innovation, which is the only school from the United States selected in that Top 10 category. The school's emphasis on project-based learning and other innovations have led to remarkable achievements. And last, but definitely not least, I'd like to introduce to you Tom Rooney. He is from Lindsay Unified School District. He is the superintendent there. And Lindsay is a rural district in central California that serves about 4,000 students. Nearly all of the students in the district qualify for free and reduced-priced meals. 53% are English learners, and they also serve a homeless population of about 13%. Lindsay is a school district that has reversed historically-low achievement and graduation rates by taking a new approach to learning. They're nationally known for their integrated approach to personal learning. And the Lindsay educators have implemented a competency-based educational model that allows learners to own and manage their own learning. And their learning facilitators, also known as teachers, provide guidance and interventions. And as a result, they are seeing great achievements in many areas for their students. So this is our esteemed panel for the morning. And each superintendent is going to take roughly 10 minutes, give or take seven to 10 minutes, to share with you a bit more about their district. And after each superintendent has presented, I will have an opportunity to engage in a little panel discussion and ask a couple of questions that might be very helpful for us to know as we go into our Board reflection. Last thing, Board members, just as a matter of letting you know in your folder, you do have some information that will align with the panel presentation. So at this time, I'd like to bring forward our first superintendent. And, superintendents, please know, and I have the handheld mic right over here, you may present from where you are sitting, or you may also present from the podium, whatever is most comfortable for you. But we'll have Michael Matsuda from Anaheim Union High School District start us off.
Okay. Thank you so much, Cynthia and Linda, in the State Board of Education for this opportunity to share our journey in redesigning and reimagining what schools can be for the state of California. As mentioned earlier, the AUHSD is a 7th through 12th district serving about 27,000 students across five cities. 80% of our population is free and reduced lunch identified, 8% McKinney-Ventle homeless identified, over 50 languages spoken at home, and there are 10 generational gangs operating throughout greater Anaheim. Yet, the vast majority of our students are thriving. Led by a critical mass of amazing teacher and instructional leaders, we have been able to develop a cohesive framework, bringing together state initiatives under one umbrella we call the Career Preparedness Systems Framework, CPSF. Think about a Venn diagram with a student in the center of our three drivers. 21st century skills, we call the Five Cs. Technical skills, including CTE pathways, dual credit, mentoring and internship opportunities. And finally, our third driver, probably the most important, is the development of student voice and agency. These drivers are intentionally integrated during the school day. The Five Cs, basically, are the, the, think about emotional and relational intelligence, are taught by every teacher across every content area. Technical skills are developed through amazing career pathways and mentoring experiences that take place during the school day. We have been able to achieve this because of our Anaheim Collaborative, which includes the Orange County ROP, Higher Ed from UCI, Cal State Fullerton, Cypress, and Fullerton College, as well as the city of Anaheim, as well as over 120 corporate and nonprofit partners. Besides traditional pathways, we are now offering pathways in cybersecurity, artificial intelligence, biotechnology, esports and game design, the Business Incubation Lab, sustainability, and we're currently working with UCI on nanotechnology. Our dual-credit partnerships with community colleges, in most cases, are aligned to our pathways, and we have tapped into the enormous talent of community college professors. The third driver, the most important, is the development of student voice, purpose, and agency in a student's education. One of our core values is ensuring that education works for students and not the other way around. I venture that if you were to ask students across the state whether education worked for them, or do they work for them? for them, or do they work for education, you'd likely find that the factory model is alive and well and stifles authentic student voice. As with all our drivers, teachers are vital, especially in cultivating the Five Cs and developing student voice. If you visit our schools, and like my esteemed colleague from Lindsay, we have hundreds of educators visiting monthly. At Anaheim Union High School District, you would hear from students themselves, share their purpose through truncated TED Talks we call Soapbox Speeches, adopted from MiFSA and the L.A. County of Education Democracy School Initiatives. You will hear students give spoken-word performances or share digital videos, all created through performance tasks designed by their teachers, working collaboratively across the curriculum. Our counselors help students curate their growing passion, express in their performance tasks into six-year plans that help students decide on where they want to do and what they want to do with their lives, and maybe what major they will choose. If you think about a TED Talk, often the speaker ends with a call to action, and ours are no different, beginning with who they are by telling their own personal stories and ending with what they want to do with their issue. This is why we lead the state in students graduating with the Seal of Civic Engagement. Now, although we don't tell students how to vote, they are registered because they have found their issue and have connected the dots in who is responsible, who benefits, and who does not benefit. They are ready to participate in society as responsible citizens. The three drivers of the CPSF all coalesce to support a whole child developing into a whole adult. Isn't that what a healthy democracy needs? Our CPSF really encapsulates a graduate student profile. I'd like to put a shout out to our friends at Scaling Student Success, which many superintendents and districts are involved with. And this is all about developing over time with many stakeholders, including parents, students, teachers, and community members, what a high school education means in their community. The CPSF helps us ground our LCAP and SPSA work, which is aligned to developing the student profile. We monitor our CPSF primarily through a capstone program in which all teachers build learning experiences through performance task assessments, PTAs. These PTAs are curated by students in their e-portfolios and become part of their personal resumes even after high school. Importantly, PTAs allow for us to measure what we value and embed much student reflection in their work, which is the basis of what our research partner, Dr. Mary Helen Imordino-Yang of USC, calls transcendent thinking. We agree with Dr. Imordino-Yang and many of you in the State Board of Education, who have spoken about the test factory model and how it is usurping students' opportunities for long-term growth in all areas of their lives. In the midst of a growing youth mental health crisis, reframing our view of education as helping students find meaning and purpose in their learning is a powerful tool for well-being. The current emphasis on learning loss and test scores is a deficit-based approach to education, which will stigmatize a generation of resilient young people as lost. We believe in a whole-child approach, which values students and their families as assets and focuses on healing through personal narratives and stories. When we envision CPSF and its core elements, it fosters an equitable and just approach to learning that becomes more meaningful and relevant to our students and their futures. It supports and enhances the student experience, especially for those student groups often underserved and are underrepresented. Through the lens of the MTSS, this, in the Anaheim Union High School District, the idea is the idea Tier One approach. Finally, I'd like to commend the governor and the SBE and the education community for continuing to support one of its most important initiatives, the Community School Initiative, which 15 of our 20 schools currently benefit from, actually, all of our schools benefit from. It has been rejuvenating, not only for our community, but for all of our teachers and our visitors too, who come monthly to learn from us and with us. And what it's done is it has allowed teachers to have the resources to connect community issues with student learning and problem solving. Good things have happened in our district. For example, we have built an urban farm at one of our high schools, Magnolia High School, which is used as an agro-science laboratory in greater Anaheim to help solve food deserts in low-income communities. Thanks to our amazing teachers, it has made a huge difference in the lives of students and families across the district. I'd like to end with some data, because people say, well, show us the beef here. What's really happening in terms of the student data? Our graduation rates in the last six years have improved from 86% to 91%. A-through-G completion has improved from 43% to 54%. Our CTE pathway completion, which is different from participation, we have a lot of kids participating, is up from 3.6% to 10.2%. And our state seal of biliteracy, and thanks to Shelley Spiegel-Coleman and the Californians Together for initiating that so many years ago, we currently have one and four of our graduates graduating with the state seal of biliteracy. And as I said, mentioned earlier, we lead the state of California with students graduating with the state seal of civic engagement, at 3,039 students. Additionally, at UC Irvine, over four years, they have reported that AUHSD students have outperformed all other feeder districts, both in cumulative GPA and persistence rates. They are very amazed by this, and because of that work, we have been recipients to a major CCI grant with the University of California, looking at what we're doing, the CPSF and how it's impacting student performance at the University of California. Our numbers are similar at Cal State Fullerton, and we're just really, really excited that we're able to show, you know, both satellite data improvement. Yet, if you were to look at our California dashboard, we would be considered a mediocre district based on our demography. And that really disturbs us, because all the things I shared, all the good work that the teachers and the community have done together, focused on the initiatives of the state and the priorities from the state, obviously, under the hood, there's a lot of exciting things happening. And I know that we're going to talk more about some of our recommendations in terms of tweaking things, so that we can better sort of allow these amazing districts that want to redesign and reimagine what school experiences can be, so that we can work together with the State Board and the state of California in that journey. Finally, I'd like to end with a quote from a professor of education at Southern Oregon, Renee Owen, who just wrote an article, an op-ed piece in EdWeek. And this is what she said, quote, "Managing dystopia is certainly more familiar to many education leaders than leading a turn toward a more equitable paradigm." This is our opportunity to reimagine what schools can be. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Matsuda. Thank you very much for giving us a little bit of insight into what's happening there in Anaheim Union High School District. Board members, as we get ready to hear from Dr. Brawley from Compton, just wanted to let you know there will be an opportunity for you to ask questions of the panel, after, of course, I ask questions of the panel. Dr. Brawley, would you please share with us a little bit about the great things happening in Compton Unified?
Good morning, everyone. So, Compton Unified School District is a school district of roughly 20,000 students. When I arrived 12 years ago, Compton Unified was not doing so well. So I'm going to take you along a little journey, fast forward, backwards, fast forward, but backwards first. When I arrived, our graduation rates were 58%. They were dismal. Our A-through-G completion rate was about 12%, also dismal. And we had a high dropout rate, and our performance indicators, as measured by the SBAK and ELA and Math, we were not doing well at all. So, fast forward, let's just fast forward about eight years, maybe seven years. Compton became a talked-about school district in terms of its huge turnaround in performance. And I'm going to tell you how that happened. So, I am a student of Malcolm Baldrick Performance Excellence Training, and we pretty much implemented that piece within our organization, and we have an extreme focus on continuous improvement. So, from 58% to now, as of today, 93% graduation rate. You can clap about that if you want. And from a 12% A-through-G completion rate, A-through-G is the requirements to get into CSU's and UC systems. From 12% in 2012, we exceeded 52% last year. We're expected to be around 67% this year. So, intense focus on continuous improvement, but also an intense focus on benchmarking our performance against our surrounding competitors, not organizations, competitors. So we benchmark our performance against LAUSD, Lenwood, Downey, Paramount.
Everything's working.
What'd you say?
I said it's like.
It sounds like it's working. And we, we measure our performance annually in terms of how we're performing against our surrounding competitors, and we continuously adjust for improvement. So, Compton is known as a turnaround school district now. We've turned that district around, thanks to the leadership of our governing board and the ability of our administrative team to implement things. However, there's a lot of moving parts in that. So part of that is due to the partnerships that exist. AB288, you guys are familiar with AB288, which is dual enrollment. Compton Unified, probably about eight years ago, sponsored, we had an assembly member sponsor legislation, as well as one of our senators, to make that more equitable, if you will, to students. So we had started early college high school, and in our partnership with Compton College, we found out that our students, our immigrant students, were being charged out-of-state tuition. So we had our assembly member and senator sponsor a bill, which was approved at the state level, to make that free for every student. We took the approach that students should be entitled to a free and appropriate education, so our immigrant students shouldn't be charged out-of-state tuition fees when all of our other students were not being charged that. And we successfully won that for all students across the state of California. So that's an example. That's an example of being innovative in your thinking and how you can produce results for not just your students, but students across the state of California. And typically, when we are addressing things, we're addressing it from that point of view. Is this good for Compton, but also is it good for students across the state of California? So partnerships. We are a high-performing district when it comes to AB288 completion rates. We have a wonderful partnership with Compton College. And, you know, we took a program where very few students were participating in dual enrollment to where it is across the district at all of our comprehensive high schools. We also have Compton Early College, which is a top-performing high school in the state of California and a top-performing high school across the nation. Last I checked, I believe we were number 32 in the state of California and number 273 nationally, right there in Compton. And so, we're doing quite a bit, but the doing is really an intense focus of partnerships. Now, how have we gotten better in terms of providing outcomes for students, particularly at the secondary level? Gareup Grants. We were successful in securing Gareup Grants with UCI and Cal State Dominguez Hills. We secured roughly four, approximately $5 million Gareup Grants, two at each of those institutions. And so, when we talk about outcomes and we talk about graduation rates, that's incorporated in that process as well. It's not just about the continuous improvement process we have in and implementing Malcolm Baldrick principles, but it's also a combination of the partnerships that we have in place. And now, we're about to go for a third grant, but our graduation rates have increased so much that they don't believe we'd be successful in securing one. So that's an example. We have an intense focus on STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. I would challenge any public school district to show that they're doing more than what Compton Unified School District is doing in that area. How did that come about? Partnership, once again, with Digital Promise League of Innovative Schools. About 10 years ago, we entered into that organization. We learned from the surrounding school districts, there were only about 50 that were in it nationally at that time. We'd go on visits to learn from them, and eventually, we wound up hosting, two years ago, it was the most successful visit that had ever occurred within the League of Innovative Schools cohorts. So what do we do? What do we provide for students? Beginning at preschool, coding. Our preschool students are coding. We continue that throughout K through 12. But our students are also exposed to esports. They're exposed to robotics. They're exposed to computational thinking. They are exposed to engineering. Additional partnerships. Partnerships are very key. We have partnership with Raytheon, also known as RTX now. And that is the NAF Academy, that is in place at all of our comprehensive high schools with a focus on engineering. How did that come about? Raytheon had a need to develop a workforce, and they came to Compton through NAF to implement the engineering academies at Compton High School, Centennial High School, and Dominguez High School. So now, we are literally focused on gearing those students up with CTE pathway completion. But by the time they graduate from Compton Unified School District, they're able to enter the workforce through Raytheon. So partnerships are key. Also, Dominguez High School, we have JA, Junior Achievement, JA3DE. We are the second school district in California to have implemented a program. And the JA3DE program provides students with opportunities to solve real-life Fortune 500 corporate issues. So, the CEOs of the company present a challenge to the students that they're trying to address for better productivity or better outcomes, and the students actually take that on. Then they have to present to the company, and then teams, the team that does the best job wins the award for that. So that is a program that is in place at Dominguez High School that forces kids to take on real-life challenges that are happening within Fortune 500 companies to address real-life issues that they're facing. So partnerships, continuous improvement focus throughout the district. All of those things have brought about the changes within Compton Unified School District. As we look at how we have performed pertaining to assessment outcomes, last year, our school district grew 6% in math. Not very many school districts grew at all in the area of math. We grew- We grew 2% in ELA and Language Arts. So once again, that is that continuous improvement process that is being worked throughout the organization. So we really have an intense process that is in place. Our management team, consisting of our site principals, they participate in data chats with me on a monthly basis. So maybe elementary one month, might be middle school another month, and high school within that same month. But they are responsible for looking at the dashboard indicators, tracking their performance within the current school year to determine whether or not they're on target to do better or do worse, whether it's suspensions, chronic absenteeism, a performance in ELA or math. And it's just an ongoing process that we work throughout the organization. So that's a little bit about what's happening within Compton Unified School District and the processes that are in place and the innovative approaches that are happening to produce better results.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for sharing. We appreciate that. And we'll get to hear a little more when we have our panel discussion. Now I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Rooney. And please, go right ahead.
Good morning. And I believe a presentation is going to be pulled up. There we are. So my name is Tom Rooney. The Superintendent of Schools for Lindsay Unified. It is truly an honor to be able to, one, share the Lindsay story with you and the story of Lindsay learners, but in hopes that perhaps this would be a source of inspiration or source of ideas as you do your own planning and prioritizing for all children throughout the state of California. Thank you for Michael and Darren, incredible work you're doing in your districts and the children who are benefiting from that. Before I get into the Lindsay story, I wanted to first acknowledge several things that have happened through the state that have been incredibly powerful for Lindsay. The universal preschool. We have many, many of our children attending preschool, and we have five star ratings on all of our preschool programs. The preschool and TK building facilities. You're going to see incredibly beautiful facilities when you come to Lindsay in relation to that. We also have a very wonderful and powerful wraparound services for our community through our McKenna Vento, as well as our first five programs. We have an expansive dual enrollment program. And we're a high school of 1,000 learners, and we have 18 pathways that we offer for our learners. So, and most recently, we have a powerful build your own program. You heard Dr. Darting Hammond share earlier that the residency model. So what we are doing essentially, both through state and federal funding, is we are having Lindsay's children go through college through local resources and come back to Lindsay to teach Lindsay's children. Very, very powerful and transformational in our work. In one of these days, one of those Lindsay's children is going to be the superintendent and all that. So it's been an incredible journey. I want to first start out with our demographics. I want to give you some context of who we are and the community that we serve. So as you look at these demographics, you can see some very challenging things that we face related to English learners, children of poverty, very limited support that can be offered at the home. The community of Lindsay has this type of data. The fifth most impoverished community in the state of California. High unemployment, very low median household income. And I share this data with you because towards the end of my presentation, I'm going to share the results that are happening with these children. And I want you to see this because Lindsay community might be somewhat severe compared to most communities in our state, but there are many, many states who has many, many communities in our state that have similar demographics and similar challenges. Before we started our work of transformation to a learner centered system, this was the data that we were facing. And this is about 15 years ago. Very few learners graduated from high school and very few went to a university. And those who did, very few got, actually ever got a degree. It was a very, we had, when you look at this data, we had the need to transform. Why? Most importantly, because of these people. The moms and the dads that entrust their children to us. The moms and the dads throughout the state that bring their children to schools, they put them on the buses, they walk them, they push the little ones in strollers, and they say, these are my children. Can you give them the opportunity they deserve? And we embraced that in Lindsay fully. And one way that we've, how the core of how we've transformed our system over the last 15 years is we engaged the voice of the community. We had a series of community forums where we essentially asked the community these five questions. And I would challenge districts throughout the state to ask them, have you ever asked yourself, why do you actually exist? It's interesting what you came up with. What we come up with, we exist to empower and motivate for today and tomorrow. That is our mission. Not just learners, but adults and the entire community. We also, we answered questions around what are the values that we embrace? What are the principles that will guide our decisions? But I'm going to tell you that the most important question there is what is the description of our graduate? And I view this as our gift to the world. This is the type of human being that's going to leave our system. And on this slide, you'll see what our community asked us to do. They said, please produce children, produce young adults into society that are like this, that are people who are well balanced, self-directed, caring and compassionate, civic minded, culturally aware. You're going to hear, and you've already heard, but a push for the local profile of a graduate. This is our profile of a graduate. How many of you would like your own children to be like this? Your own neighbors, the people we meet in the store, the people who we see in church, how many of you would like them to be this kind of a human being? So in Lindsay, it's not just about academic proficiency. That's absolutely critical. But it's also about what kind of a person you're becoming. And that's described in our profile of a graduate. Essentially, our system is built on a very basic principle that people learn in different ways in different timeframes. Every one of us in this room, everyone listening in, every human being learns in a different way in a different timeframe. The very fundamental problem with the traditional model, the factory based model that Linda shared earlier, is that it doesn't honor this basic principle. It basically puts learners in grade levels and in a certain place because of their age or for some other reason, but it's not because of what they need. It's not honoring who the individual learner is. And when we started this program, I'll tell you a quick story. There is, we started this program, we met with every single, we started with the freshman class of 2009. And we asked, we talked to every single parent of an eighth grade learner and every single eighth grade learner. And I was meeting with this group of eighth grade learners, there was probably about 50 of them in the room. And I said, next year, you're all going on to Lindsay High School. I want to let you know that for some of you, this will be a four year experience. But for some of you, you're going to finish in three or three and a half. And for some of you, it might take four and a half or five. But what we're going to do is we're going to make sure that you learn. That's our commitment to you. We're not just going to push you through the system because the year passed. We're going to guarantee competence, both academically and personal excellence. That's what we're going to commit to doing for you. 13-year-old boy in the back row raised his hand. And he says, Mr. Rooney, so what you're telling me, what you're telling us, you're telling us that you're not going to give up on us. Because you know what? They gave up on me when I was a seven-year-old kid in the second grade. And you know how come I know they gave up on me? Because they keep pushing me through the system. I wasn't learning. I got further and further behind. I learned to hate school. And here I am at eighth grader. I hate school, and I barely know how to read because the adults gave up on me when I was seven years old. So I would challenge all of us to think about it. How many children in this state have that mindset that the adults have given up on us? They've given up on me, and they've given up on me because they keep letting me go through the system whether I learn or not. As a matter of fact, some of those kids, they push them through because they want them to go forward. They want to get them out of here. How fair is that? Where's the equity in that? This is the model of Lindsay's performance based system. We essentially are building the ideal learning experience for every Lindsay learner. It has many of the components that you saw Linda share earlier. I didn't realize that until I was looking at it, but it's a culture of investment, culture of empowerment. It's a culture that is learner centered, that's focused on quality instruction, effective and transformational uses of technology, and all of the things that you see on here. I'll let you read this slide to yourself. And I know as the State Board of Ed, you have this in your packet as well. This is the core components. It's all about the learners. We'd have to ask ourselves as we move forward with policies and initiatives at the state level, is it really about the learners? And that would be my challenge for you, to make sure everything is about giving learners what they need as opposed to something else. Lindsay is a learner centered model described like this. And imagine this, this is right out of the vision that our community gave us, that every Lindsay learner comes to school, they're met at their developmental learning level, they are challenged, they are successful, and they want to come back to school the next day. How many of our learners throughout this state want, we can say this about, what a powerful thing to aspire for, that every learner wants to actually come to school every day because they're getting what they need? And here's the data. This is pre-pandemic data. The current data is a little lower. We're on recovery like so many people, but our graduation rate now is like 96.5, but it was 98% pre-pandemic. You can look at the percent going to college, the percent getting a degree. And you saw some data earlier about the California Healthy Kids Survey. We're in the 99th percentile in several of our schools, Lindsay High School being one, making it essentially the safest learner connected, bully free, drug free, alcohol free high school in the state of California. Despite our demographics that I shared in the first couple of slides, our transformation for learner centeredness has proven results. And like others, we've had over 1,200 visitors from across the nation and internationally that are coming. And what they do is they come and they spend a day in the life of a Lindsay learner. They spend a day with our learners. And currently, we're part of think tanks at the international and the national level. And now, more recently, through scaling student success at the state level, think tanks of how are we transforming education? Some of you may be familiar with this person, Robert Marzano, very well known. He wrote the foreword to a book we published in 2017. Robert Marzano knows of thousands and thousands of school systems throughout the nation. And he says that Lindsay Unified District transformed its system into one it can and should become the model for K-12 education for the next several decades. We are hoping that our system and the things we've learned can be of benefit to others. Many are learning through their visitations. I'm going to push you now as the State Board of Education a little bit. I'm going to drop some things here that I'm just going to encourage you to think about. Moving away from a traditional factory based models, we require some things. These are some things in Lindsay that we've done or we're moving towards. We do not have A through F grading. It's totally inequitable and it's completely subjective. We have rubric based scoring. We don't average grades. When you start the learning, you're not actually supposed to know the content. And so if you get a low score at the beginning, that's okay. But that should be counted against you at the end when you have competency. Grade levels, we have content levels, not grade levels, based on age. Learners move based on their proficiency, not on their age or the end of a school year. The use of technology, leveraging that. We were well ahead of the curve. Every learner had a device and everyone was connected in 2016, community wide. We closed our schools for the pandemic on March 17th, and we opened up the very next day for learning because everybody had a device, everybody had connectivity, and our curriculum was already online. Future focused thinking, using space, credentialing requirements, and really thinking through that and influencing that to give every learner the person they need regardless of the credential. Funding based on seat time, politically driven governance models, and a focus limited to academic proficiency. What we say is let's change those. And many other things, but these are key things that you could think about. Because the truth is, how many of you believe that there are problems in our world? Show your hands. There are problems in our world. There are problems on many fronts. Corruption and challenges and... The battery is running low. That's okay. This is the last slide.
Challenges.
I think they're cutting me off. The point and the message of this is that the truth is, these challenges are going to be solved by our children in our school system now. The future of our country, the future of democracy, the future of the world, the future of humanity depends on them solving those problems. And what are we doing to meet them, to get at their level, to give them what they need in order to actually thrive in that future that they will live in? We're counting on them. And right now, they're counting on us. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Rooney. And I think that is just a great way to jump into a burning question that I know I have and I know many who are listening have as well. And I'm just going to anchor it where you've ended, knowing that the students we are serving today are the one who will, the ones who are going to be faced with solving the challenges of our world, some of which we know now, some of which we don't even know. And as an educational system and those of us in it, we have a moral imperative to be sure that our young people are ready to do so. So I'm going to pose a question, and I'd like to give each of you maybe about two or three minutes to answer this question. Considering our current system in California, what has enabled you to have the successes and be innovative? And you've touched on that, so you really don't have to spend a lot of time on that piece. But more importantly, where might there be obstacles? And each of you have been able to facilitate within your district, I would say, a navigation around perhaps obstacles that are in place within our system. What are things you feel our board members need to know as far as things that can help you further innovate and create that learner centered world for students? And what obstacles and challenges are in place that if you had your magic wand, you'd be able to just move out of the way so you could innovate even further?
If I could add a...
Yes, please.
For the kind of work that you're doing to spread more widely, what kind of state actions would be productive?
Thank you.
Both for what you're doing locally, but also for others who would want to do this kind of work.
Thank you. And I'll say this in case those who are live streaming didn't hear, it's about scaling up. What type of things would need to happen at the state level in order to be able to scale more broadly, the work you're doing? So I'm going to give each of you a couple of minutes. If you see my microphone waving, that means your time is up, so to speak, because we want to give the board members time to ask a question or two as well. So anyone can take it, anyone who would like to jump in.
I'll touch upon two things. Arts and music, so Proposition 28, also the Arts and Music Block Grant. Greater flexibility. So I know there is... So I know there is a movement to try and have individuals with the expertise come in, sort of like the vocational authorization, right? That we're allowed to use at the secondary level. There's not enough teachers. So there's going to be a lot of money that's just sitting there not being used if there's not greater flexibility in issuing a vocational authorization to individuals that have the expertise to provide the education. The second one, CTE, California Technical Education. So right now, everything is seat-based. You know, they got to go through courses, they got to sit behind a desk, they got to take Course 1, take Course 2, complete a capstone project. That might consist of three courses, that might consist of four courses, depending on what the subject is. Yet, we know that industry-level certifications, individuals leave high school making $80,000 to $120,000 with an IT certification. But yet, CDE does not recognize certifications as pathway completion. That would be a wonderful way, and that is a barrier, but that would be a wonderful way for school districts across the state of California to get better results in terms of the College Career Indicator Dashboard.
Thank you, Dr. Brohli. Who would like to chime in?
Yeah, I think there are big tweaks and little tweaks. I think on the little tweaks, we indicated the better, more intentional alignment between the LCAP work and the graduate student profiles, allowing districts or pushing districts to do this work. I mean, I think through scaling student success and others, there's a lot of commonalities, and they're going to focus, the community is going to focus on skills and emotional, relational intelligence, all the things that we've talked about here. I think the other small, in our view, small tweak is to allow more attention visually on local indicators in the dashboard. I think that would, coupled with more focus on graduate student profiles, that would allow more flexibility. I think some of the big tweaks Tom had talked about in terms of shifting to enrollment with accountability measures away from the factory model of daily attendance. I think the other area that we are looking in, in terms of school redesign, is alt-ed and independent study, which is more work-based rather than seat-based. Work-based does lead to more thinking about mastery, completion, and I think these are really, you know, there's, I think the state needs to push for expanded pilots. You've heard from my colleagues here, call them innovation zones, or ways in which the state can work with these districts that want to move forward and allow them to pilot some of these programs to learn how to scale. And I think the other thing, too, we can't forget the importance of our teachers. There's so many great teachers in each of our school districts sitting right in front of us who want to do this work but feel shackled and yoked by some of these traditional requirements.
Thank you for sharing that. And you mentioned innovation zones, and I wanted to share with the board that we will have opportunity to hear even more about innovation zones when we hear from some of our partners in other states as well. So thank you so much for sharing that. And Superintendent Rooney, again, you guys have really reimagined school for learners. And I was sitting here in the amen corner when you brought up about grading and why are we averaging what students know at the beginning of the year as opposed to really focusing on what it is they've learned? What would you like to add to this conversation as far as what obstacles may be in place, how we can do things? You kind of threw it out there for us, but go ahead, take us a little further.
All right. Well, just a couple, I mean, I agree with what I shared with my colleagues from my colleagues here, but a couple of other things to consider is it's almost a way of finding a way to incentivize or give people permission to play in this space of future-focused and redesign. Because right now, there's a culture of compliance, there's a culture of meet these numbers, be careful what shows up on the dashboard, it's going to become media, it's going to get on it, all of this stuff. And so there's almost this fear of actually doing something outside the box, right? And so my encouragement is, whether it's called innovation zones, whether it's called giving people permission, or whether it's actually incentivizing and giving grants to say, we need people to reinvent the system so that it's learner-centered, future-focused, and gives every learner what they need. Who's going to take that challenge on? When you do that, people will step up. Because there are incredibly innovative souls out there that are just resting below the surface, and they want to be unleashed, but they sort of can't sometimes because it's so compliance-driven. Another element to consider is just related to what gets measured, what gets elevated. And so anything that can be done that honors local measurements, the local profile of a graduate, what the local community wants for their children will actually happen. There's some data that shows that many districts meet their local indicators. Why? Because they picked them. Because that's what matters to them. And what matters to LA Unified may not be the same of what matters to rural Lindsay, which may not be the same that matters to inner-city Sacramento. So some local indicators in measuring that would be critical. And then I could keep going down the list, but maybe one more to consider to push out there is the credentialing requirements. Because sometimes we cannot always give the learners the right adult they need because they don't have the right piece of paper. And how fair is that? It's very inequitable that somebody has to spend a year with somebody when they actually would thrive with the person next door, or they would thrive with the person who maybe doesn't have that piece of paper. Allowing people to, allowing adults to teach children regardless of the piece of paper they have. I mean, I'm all for some sort of requirements on that, but maybe some flexibility or some creativity in how that may look.
Thank you. And thank you, actually, all three of you for sharing. And I was, again, just feverishly taking notes over here about the greater flexibility in the use of funding for arts and CTE, looking at that alignment to the LCAP and the graduate profile. And that's something that all of you kind of lifted up in different ways that you have done. And Superintendent Matsuda, I love the "from paper to practice" theme that is spoken of in your district. So really looking at more emphasis on those local indicators and incentivizing innovation, all of those have been lifted up. So I'd like to now provide opportunity to any board members that would like to ask a question of our panel, one of the superintendents or all of them. We do have a few minutes left before we go into our break and then our small group discussion. Is there any board member that would like to ask a question? Or, yes, Dr. Darling-Hammon.
I would ask questions, I want to ask you up and ask questions. I will go.
Oh, Member McQuillan put his hand up. And if we can, thank you, Member McQuillan, if you use that microphone, that way those live streaming can hear your question as well.
Thank you. Thank you all for the presentations. We heard a little bit about the SEAL of Civic Engagement, and I'd like to hear more, a little more details about how you got those numbers. So, great. Thank you.
I think for any of the initiatives, it's really important that districts develop what we call the architecture or systems underneath the hood, right? Because it's easy to say that we support democracy and civic engagement, but what's underneath there? And oftentimes, that means releasing or having accountability of someone in charge of that, teachers identified, stipended at sites and meeting regularly. So we have built an architecture underneath to ensure, what are the requirements from the state to earn? And the same goes with the SEAL of Bilitracy as well. In that way, again, we've had a number of people ask similar questions, and I said that districts have got to put skin in the game, right? It's easy, again, to have that poster to say we stand for democracy or multilingualism, but what do you have underneath? And what type of, ultimately, what type of outcome data do you have? So not only do we have kids getting the SEAL, but we also look at voter registration patterns as well as indicators. And we have students themselves now who own it and come back as interns, working with the county registrar's office. So it's really, there's a lot of energy around that initiative. And thanks to the state for pushing it out. We appreciate that opportunity.
Yes, President Darling-Hammon, and then I see Member Escobedo as well. Okay, Member Escobedo, please go ahead.
Well, again, thank you for sharing. I just want to commend it. It takes a lot of work, and it takes extended work. And a question that I have for you, you've obviously been long at your position, which is rare. What has helped you enhance your tenure at your district? What have we done as a state that has really helped you as a superintendent to flourish in your position?
Or to survive.
Or to survive, yes.
Flourish or survive.
Okay, so I'm starting my 13th year as superintendent in Compton. I believe the components that have, well, one thing that really helps is a stable Board of Education locally, right? So we've had a very stable Board of Education. Those individuals that have ran have consistently been reelected. So that shows that they really believe in the vision of the school district and the implementation of what's happening locally. But the focus that we have within the organization, really around the dashboard indicators, right? And really focusing on continuous improvement in terms of getting better. Without results, I don't believe that I would be around, and I'm not so sure that the board members would continually be reelected.
It's a great question. I'm not sure I have an answer because I don't actually think about that a whole lot. But I would say, one of the things that I would say is that I think in some ways, from my perspective, is the State Board of Ed has not gotten in our way. And that's important. It's not like, you know, there's not like, don't do, don't do. We haven't had, like, you know, people coming down and tell us not to do this. I don't think Compton has had the same thing. We just, you know, we are, we've been free to do that.
Out-of-control LCAP process.
Okay. Other than that one, that one is, you're right. But as far as like, as a superintendent, it hasn't stopped me.
I think it's given us political cover to do the right thing. The challenge has been that many of these initiatives on the ground exist in silos, right? And I think that's part of our challenge in terms of rethinking and redesign. We, and I really believe that in this political environment, the emphasis on career pathways and Golden State pathways is whether you're on the right or the left, our constituents agree that that's the way forward. Now, for us, under the hood, we really want to develop that identity and that agency in linking it to careers. But to get to the culture in the classroom of identity affirmation, these TED Talks we're talking about, you need safe, inclusive classrooms. And that leads to ethnic studies, you know, and by telling your stories. So that's how we get to a lot of this stuff. And I think that's what some of the districts are struggling with because everything's siloed.
Yes, President Darling-Hammon, I was going to give the final question to you.
How do we address the silos? Are there things that we should be doing to address those? You all mentioned, or at least two of you mentioned, the LCAP. What ought to happen with the LCAP, you know? Darren, you snuck that in, and the last comment, and then you had mentioned it earlier. What are some of the things that we really need to be focusing on?
Well, I think, you know, getting back to his and then addressing that. So local control has helped. I don't think any of us can deny that. But the LCAP process has just gotten progressively worse. It's a process that was supposed to be cleaned up to be shorter, but it keeps growing. And imagine, imagine if you were a very small school district and you don't have the staff to take that on. And that's extremely overwhelming. It consumes a lot of time that could be spent differently.
And Mike, you mentioned something about in the LCAP, how would we give more attention to local?
Indicators.
Indicators and the graduate profile? I mean, there was something about the way the LCAP is presented and then the way the local indicators are presented, and I think you mentioned that.
I think if we begin with that process, if you heard from Superintendent Rooney, we've seen many of the results, something like 80 districts that have done this work. And there's a lot of similarities in terms of what the communities would hope for, for their high school graduates. And that's what we need in terms of creating that infrastructure and architecture, the valued networks and structures under the hood based on a graduate student profile. I mean, I think with AI tools now, the state can access those 80 and more because they're happening across the state of California, and maybe come up with some common, agreed-upon graduate student profiles. I think there's an opportunity. We have not talked about technology and the advent of really powerful AI tools. Now, there are some lessons and caveats and red flags, but I think that's another big issue in terms of access.
Well, thank you very much. Let's give our panel a round of applause. I'm sorry, we have one other question, so you'll get another round of applause in just a moment. Member Orozco Gonzalez, please.
I'm just so appreciative of your conversations. And as a teacher in the classroom, a line that you said, Superintendent Rooney, about giving every learner the person that needs, they need regardless of their credential, really resonated with me. As a mentor and induction, a master teacher for over 15 years, and in the profession for 25 years, what types of flexibility would you like to see when it comes to credentialing so that we could get the appropriate educator facilitating instruction for your students? Because I always see myself as a facilitator, a gradual release of responsibility on my students. And I'm mentoring right now a teacher who is a maven when it comes to the arts and performing programs, arts theater, and she has some difficulty with her credential because of testing and so forth. But I think of the CTE programs, and I know that Superintendent Brohli, you mentioned being innovative with schools with coding and those CTE programs and pathways that sometimes don't have those pathways to credentialing that look a little bit different. What do you think when it comes to that?
I think you asked a great question, and I think you gave a lot of answers as well.
I know, sorry. I was thinking.
Honestly, that was perfect because those are the types of things. Because somebody has to jump through a certain hoop or they can't pass a certain test, or they didn't have a certain experience in order to do something, even though they have incredible life experiences, but they never had the job that did that around CTE, for example. I mean, we have a credible educator in our Community Day program, the most needy learner who is just producing incredible results. He couldn't pass the test. He's not in the job next year. That's a detriment to our learners. And so that's just, so I think you named some of them. It's just, that would be the type of flexibility. And I don't know if it's more time or if it's being creative about the types of requirements that are needed. And it's the same thing with learners. Like with learners, they're going to show their proficiency in different ways. They really are. Some are not good test takers. And yet, if they don't pass the test, we get a bad mark on something, right? But if they're still proficient, if they show it in a different way. So allow people to show, adults to show their proficiency in a variety of different ways, and consider what people say about them. Consider about what their mentors like you say about them, and how ready they are and how good they would be for learners. So that might be a few ideas.
Thank you for that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Superintendent Rooney. And again, let's please give our panelists a big round of applause. Thank you for opening yourselves and your districts to us. At this time, we are going to go to a break. We will come back at 10:15 and engage in some more conversation. Superintendents, I know you are so busy and on the move and probably trying to catch some flights, but board members, if you have any questions you'd like to talk flights, but board members, if you have any questions you'd like to talk to them about on their way out, please feel free to. We'll see you back at 10:15. Thank you. Agenda, and this is where you will have opportunity within your small groups to really reflect upon what you've heard this morning. Again, Dr. Darling-Hammon led us with the California Way, where we have been, where we are, what things we need to keep in mind. We've heard from superintendents who have lifted up a few things. They've talked about graduate profiles. They've talked about innovation zones, flexibility that's needed, incentivizing innovation. Those are just some of the things that bubble to the surface. So now, board members, you're going to engage in a small group conversation that really allows for you to reflect upon the insights and wonderings that these discussions that we had prior to the break raised for you. And also kind of continuing along that theme of how can or should we as a board support those innovative approaches at the local level? And we heard a little bit about things that perhaps should be considered, and also we heard a little blurb that some of the help is just stay out of our way. So please keep that in mind as you're engaging in your conversation. Just to give you an idea for your timeframe, you're going to take from now until roughly 10:45, 10:50. I'll give you a five-minute warning. And then at 10:50, somewhere about there, we're going to have opportunity for just a very brief share-out from each of the tables. Again, based on what insights or wonderings did the discussion raise for you and how can we support innovative approaches at the LEA level? You will also find those questions in your folder at the very back of the section that had the handouts and information from the superintendent. So you'll find the questions there as well. Are there any questions that you have at this time?
At the very back of the section.
Oh, that would be me, my gosh. Okay. So please, go right ahead, and I will give you a five-minute warning when it is about time for us to prepare for a share-out. Thank you.
Oh, that would be me, my gosh. Okay. So please, go right ahead, and I will give you a five-minute warning when it is about time for us to prepare for a share-out. Thank you. Okay. So please, go right ahead, and I will give you a five-minute warning when it is about time for us to prepare for a share-out. Thank you. Okay. Go right ahead. 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 Okay. Go right ahead.
Okay, Board, I just wanted to let you know, we're going to prepare to go into a report out in just a couple of minutes. So please take about, I'd say 60 to 90 seconds. I learned from the best, I learned from the best. Take 60 to 90 seconds, not to share, but to synthesize what the shareout's going to be. So you have a lead at each table that will actually report on your behalf. And so I just want to give a heads up that that time is getting ready to come in just a little bit. So take another minute or so to gather your thoughts, and then we're going to go into our shareouts shortly. Okay, your 60 to 90 seconds has expired, and then some. Alrighty. So if we, I think you can just share from your tables, to be very honest. Just take a couple of minutes and lift up anything that you feel would be important for the rest of the members to hear as we get ready to kind of put a little pause on this portion of our conversation and ready ourselves for the next. So is there a group that'd like to go first? Okay, Member Escobedo, please do.
Okay, had a great discussion here, and this is, we first, we thought about how can we enhance flexibility and almost give permission for leaders, maybe through incentivizing how to be innovative. You know, we need to learn, because we've created such a culture of compliance, we need to figure out how do we create a culture of innovation. Another point that we wanted to share is that how can we better streamline LCAP? I think it was Mike that talked about, you know, utilizing the graduate profile as a means to reverse engineer into the LCAP. And how could we automate that process through AI or through other mechanisms? I know with the site plans, most of that document is automated. Can we maybe do something similar with LCAP? Another point that we brought is how do we better align our state initiatives? You know, really, many of the decisions we do seem to be sometimes siloed. How can we create an integrative approach and how plans are created? How grants are also dispersed? Instead of having all of these extraneous plans or different type of grants from different, either federal or state grants, how can we create more of an integrative approach for our schools to enhance their funding? And then, we would like to maybe explore and better highlight local indicators, just something to research. And then, how do we incentivize a greater student-centered approach in the form of elevating student voice? And how can we scale up exemplar community schools in our state? You know, and that could be by looking at different funding mechanisms to learn from what we've been doing, but we have to think about how do we scale up those learnings?
Thank you, Member Escobedo. Next group?
So we touched on a lot of those same things, so we'll sort of start with plus one. And then, we talked initially about the importance of moving from a learner-centered to, from a compliance-driven to a learner-centered approach. And I was, Sharon said, away from accountability toward practice, like really thinking about how do we make the resources and the knowledge about how to get better, more available, both from CDE, but also from leaders in the field and sharing across the field. We identified a couple of areas that are constraints on innovation. One is sort of system misalignment, some of which we experienced yesterday. And the preschool system is different from the K-12 system, and the K-12 system has different requirements than the community college system. And when you try to make things work across the system, you have to do a lot of fancy dancing. So, you know, thinking about how to think across systems and make them more, share a common vision and a common way of doing the work. We talked about some things that seemed overly prescriptive. And I think as we were thinking at the school level, we have several folks here who are working at the school level, things like the CTE pathways have certain restrictions associated to them. Credentialing requirements have certain restrictions that make it hard to get the learner-centered work done. And we should be looking at where we can create more room for that work to be done in a responsible way, but in a way that is more doable. Certain things that we are doing, we want to be sure get, you know, continued. And, you know, community schools, dual credit, you know, a lot of these things came up as really important. And then, how do you fit them into a system that's learner-centered? One suggested that the state board ought to hear more from successful innovators, so we understand what's needed. So that's kind of a board meeting agenda. Prioritizing, as the other group said, ways to allow for local measures to be more prominent in the LCAP and the dashboard. Right now, the local measures, like the dashboard for the state measures is in living color, and the local measures are in gray, sort of on the edge. The LCAP doesn't start with what's your vision and what's your profile of a graduate, and so on. So those kinds of things might be places to allow the, both synthesis at the local level, so there is a vision, and then, you know, prioritizing, you know, how that vision can get expressed and make sure those measures that are locally meaningful are getting attention. And then, the seals of civic engagement and seal of biliteracy are just such powerful ways to engage kids in what matters to them and in this progress towards not only meaningful learning, but, you know, the kind of learning that will do them justice and enable them to contribute to society in the future. So thinking about ways where some of these things get greater, both attention from us and attention in the local community. Anything else, I mean, just?
Thank you. And so for our group, and I'll come up here, so you don't have to turn your back. We had, again, very similar, plus one, plus one, plus one. One of the things we talked about, and I think kind of our overall, is, again, how do we incentivize innovation? How do we create those opportunities for districts to innovate in those spaces that they feel are important to, where we take away that fear of innovation, as was shared with one of the superintendents? And how might we be able to shine and highlight, I think very similar to what this table said, to shine and highlight those spaces of innovation, those places that are doing things in multiple different ways and having success with students? How could we, through some type of a recognition or hearing at a board meeting or things along that line, again, incentivize and raise up those that are, and also let them serve as learning spaces for others who may want to innovate in those areas and might wonder, well, how do we go about doing that? Another piece that we talked about was how to lift up those local indicators. Again, something that came up from each of our tables here. And really looking at lifting up the local indicators and what was suggested, I believe it might have been from one of the districts, linking that with that portrait of a graduate, that profile of a graduate, so that at the local level, they're able to look at those spaces that they determine important locally, but it's anchored to their overall vision, that profile of a graduate. And one thing that came out from the group as well with the superintendents is, well, how can you, at the state level, help to synthesize all of the great work that's happened throughout our state in that space? Because there are a lot of districts that have already engaged with their communities, already developed profiles of graduates based upon that community collaboration. So is there a way we can look at that work and come up with some commonalities that represent the state as a whole? And I will just kind of say with that, it's not about taking away what's already been done at the local level, but to also provide a state-level profile as well that districts could anchor into if they have not already engaged in that local work. And lastly, we did have some conversation about an area that we have absolutely no control over as a state board, as you would expect. And that was around that flexibility in credentialing and really looking at how to be sure that students have the teachers in front of them that they need, as well as students, teachers in front of them that can really help reach and motivate. So, again, we want to emphasize that we know this is not anything that the state board has a direct hand in, but there was some conversation on how to provide that flexibility, how the CTC might think about providing that flexibility without throwing out the academic knowledge that we know teachers need to have when they come into the space. But we also know, I think more now than ever, that teachers also need to have those soft skills that we're talking about for students? Because you can have a very strong academic knowledge, but if you can't motivate and engage with students, it just kind of falls flat and learning doesn't happen. So how might that be able to be done and that flexibility that's necessary? Again, not for us to figure out, but just something we wanted to lift up. Is there anything else, group, or are we, did I capture the high levels? Kim, yes?
There's so many examples of sample LCAPs online, but one of the things I think that we heard from the superintendent's panel was how much there has been a shift towards compliance, rather than using it as a strategic planning document. And even thinking about, like, could we give an award for most succinct LCAP? Right, to actually make it an efficient document that packs a punch in terms of communicating what you need it to, but makes clear that it's not supposed to be an administrative exercise, that it's actually supposed to factor into student outcomes and how schools are run.
A lot of legislation around that.
Yes, yes, the LCAP that just...
The most strategic LCAP.
Takes on the life of its own.
Sharon wants to get something.
I was just, one last thing that feels important to raise is how, in all three of the districts we heard from, there's such an emphasis on student strengths and being a strengths-based environment. And I wonder how we make our work more strengths-based? How we help raise up, I mean, it's sort of along the lines of hearing more from districts or schools that are doing really great work. So we're hearing the strengths, but it's also, how are we celebrating? Even schools that are struggling in some ways, are they writing about the things that they're doing really well and the way their kids are successful? Are we giving them opportunities to really make change to support the strengths of kids? Not just their deficits? That just feels like if we're really trying to think about how to emulate some of what we heard, we have to shift our focus a little bit towards what's really working, what assets kids already have, what assets communities have. Because that's what's going to make kids want to come back the next day, as you were describing earlier.
Thank you, Member Oaken. So that's the first step in our conversation this morning. And so now, we're going to get opportunity to hear from those who are doing work in other states. It was important for us to start right here in our home ground, here in California. It definitely was. To hear about the California way, to hear from some of our superintendents. And now, we can continue our learning with what may be happening with partners in other states and experiences they've had. So I'm going to turn it back over to Linda to take us to this next part.
All right, and I'm going to start by giving you a five-minute break, but no more than five minutes, because we're going to have on the screen before 11, our folks from Kentucky and New York. I'll just say that those are two states, some of us have been going to the NASB meetings and sitting on NASB committees and all of that. And we've been meeting board members and board leaders in other states and seeing that there's a lot of activity going on around the same questions that we're dealing with. Obviously, people are dealing with them across the country. So Kentucky's a place that did a very interesting strategic plan that we'll hear more about, that got presented. And then, New York has just recently been really rethinking the way in which they want to structure the high school experience and support more 21st century skills, so to speak. So we'll hear from both of them in just a couple of minutes. And I really will ask you to come back in five. Try to be here a minute before 11, so we can start right on time with them. We don't have much, we don't have much time with them. Ready for them? Let's do it. Ah, we have a PowerPoint. Lou and Sharon, are you there? Can you hear us? Where are they? Lou and Sharon, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, Lou's here.
All right. Terrific, we can't see your beautiful faces yet, for some reason.
Oh, let me see.
There's Sharon, and there's Lou. We have beautiful faces, awesome. Somehow, we're not seeing you at the same time, but we're seeing you both.
Okay.
All right, good to see you. I don't know if you can see us, can you see us?
We can.
Okay.
Yeah.
So thank you, first of all, for taking time to be with us and to share with us. And we're fortunate, in Kentucky, both Sharon Robinson, who is on the screen now, and Lou Young, who will be also in a moment, have been chairs of their State Board of Education. And they've been working on an agenda for quite a number of years. They're going to share that with us in about 10 minutes. They'll start now and take about 10 minutes to share what they're doing, why, and how that is helping them think about preparing students for the future. And then we'll hear from Lester Young when he comes on from New York. So I'm going to get you guys going. Oops. All right, take it away. There's some kind of a menu going up here on top of your face. I'm not sure why. But who's starting? Is it Lou or Sharon?
I'll start. I'll get us underway.
Okay, terrific. And thank you so much.
Hand it off to Lou. Oh, well, thank you. It's been great to engage in kind of intelligence sharing at this really interesting time in our effort to serve our students in our respective states. I enjoyed catching up on your framework for strategic planning and also looking at the New York report. We started this journey as we convened as a relatively new board. Well, it was a new board with appointed by a new governor. And we were in the midst of our first commissioner search. We've already endured our second commissioner search, but that's another story of interest. But in 2020, we adopted a strongly, very carefully worded resolution about equity and what it meant for our students. And we took the position that equity to us meant that we were providing a really productive learning experience for all our students, each and every one. And it was our job to work. Kentucky is a local-controlled state, and I put that in quotes deliberately. But it's up to every community to take that responsibility specifically and seriously. So our work was going to be from the bottom up and engaging the dynamic of local demand for quality as the frame of political and civic support for the changes that needed to be made in the instructional process and in the policy environment that supports that instructional process. Following the adoption of that equity resolution and the appointment of our first-appointed commissioner by this board, we launched an equity playbook, which was our tool for supporting the learning experiences and requirements of context and the cultural environment in the classroom necessary to support vibrant learning experiences for all students. And then we meet the effort to listen to communities about how could the State Department of Education support their deliberation in identifying what they wanted to achieve for their students and how they can hold themselves accountable for making sure that students are receiving the required instruction. And in the midst of all of this, we are managing a very contentious political environment, which was inspired by political dynamics. If the governor wanted it, the state legislature, which is run, which is controlled by another party, would find a reason to oppose. So there we were in the midst of the DBI, the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging conversation. Needless to say, this could be very, very distracting. So we had to understand, how could we, as a board, hold ourselves accountable and be in a position to continue to support the work that was underway in the local communities as they were articulating the outcomes they desired and required for their students? To support that effort, we framed the Portrait of a Learner. And that has helped to focus us in terms of what needs to change and also inspire our students in terms of the outcomes that they could actually achieve for themselves. So let's just say that in the midst of all of this, we are depending on a strong voice of demand for quality for all of our students. And the Kentucky United We Learn effort is our way of engaging with school districts and communities all over the state so that we can understand how to support their efforts, to inform their deliberations, to give volume to their demand for change, and have the Kentucky Department of Education be in a position to support the further deliberations and implementation of their work. It's been exciting to see. I've always been a grassroots kind of organizing gal, and this is really quite fulfilling to watch. It is also fulfilling to watch as we have now come to this moment of truth, if you will. And that is dealing with the assessment system and the accountability system that will actually be a... It can frustrate our efforts if we let it. It will inspire our efforts as long as we can continue to inspire that voice of change. So we're there. We're right there at the moment of truth. Are we counting what matters for our students? And are we relying on those data to inform our subsequent actions on their behalf? Or will we become distracted? I do not think we will. And Lou's going to take you a little bit deeper as we try to understand why we feel so determined that we're not going to get distracted.
And I want to just point out to our team here that in the right-hand side of your folder, you have the Kentucky Board of Education Call to Action and United We Learn PowerPoint that is about to be shared by Lou. Take it away, Lou.
Thank you. And as always, well-described, well-illustrated Dr. Robinson. Thank you. And to Dr. Darling-Hammon and Brooks and Gloria and everyone there, thanks for inviting us to tell a bit of the Kentucky story. As Sharon said, we fortunately have a very solid solution built on equitable access for every learner to high-quality learning in Kentucky. So our United We Learn is the name, a play on our state motto, of course. And we've built kind of a three-legged stool around vibrant learning experiences for every learner with innovation, number two, especially as it relates to assessment and accountability. And then, number three, with deep, community grassroots engagement, as Dr. Robinson described. The Call to Action that you have did serve as a touchstone for us to ensure that our future actions align with the values that Sharon just so eloquently described. And in it, we've made no bones about the fact that one of our expected outcomes, one that I coined as, borrowed a term and coined as, the moonshot for Kentucky, is to develop an assessment and accountability system that matters, an assessment and accountability system that is meaningful and useful to all our learners. And I know California is interested in that and have really relished the opportunity to spend time with members of your team to think about how we might lock arms and seek those affordances from the federal government around assessment and accountability that will loosen the stranglehold that federal accountability has on our efforts to get to the moon. So we went from the United We Learn Council, which was a broad, diversely representative group of constituents across Kentucky, and we sought the not-so-usual suspects to help us in that grassroots effort. And so we have built a trajectory that looks at getting to, in front of the federal government sometime over the course of the next 12 to 18 months, with a proposal that would get us to our moonshot. And that is premised, after we built this Equity Foundation that Sharon described, I've got about a minute here, on this Portrait of a Learner. And I think the why and why now is pretty obvious. This is a national movement. If we spend any time, I'll come back to that. If we spend any time talking about what employers want in what the World Economic Forum called a skills economy, these are the things we hear consistently. And I know in California, you hear the same drumbeat from family members, from students themselves, from business and industry, from higher ed partners. So to get to that place, we leaned heavily on the development of a Portrait of a Learner as a model for other districts, for all of our districts in Kentucky. And these were the six kind of essential skills and competencies that we settled on. As we look now, we have 120 of the 171 school districts with their own Portrait of a Learner, and they are very, very similar. But within deference to good, solid local control, there are uniquenesses about those. And we want to move forward and operationalize around the Portrait of a Learner. So we want to think beyond the no child left behind expectations of reading and math to what we want to know for every learner to know. And when we begin to operationalize around the portrait, then that really begs the question. If this is what we want for every kiddo in Kentucky, then what has to change in schools and classrooms to catalyze that change? And so the last slide that you do have access to, thank you, Brooks, is to a set of guidance documents that are beginning to push out across Kentucky for schools and districts to engage in this effort as we move forward. So I'll pause, and Linda, turn it over to you. I don't know if we're going to go straight to New York or handle questions at this time.
Let me see if, is Lester available? I think we're going to shift to New York and let people think about their questions, and then we'll take questions at the end. But before we do that, I do want to ask you, because part of your strategy was to create innovation zones, and that came up for us this morning. Do you want to say a word about what that has meant for the way you've been approaching it?
Yeah, I'll catch that one, Sharon, if it's okay. We call them now, because you have to have an acronym, L3 districts, Local Laboratories of Learning. And so we did have a District of Innovation regulation in Kentucky, but this pushed it with a CGSA grant from the federal government. This pushed some resources out to those districts who were already in competency ed around Portraits of a Learner or were willing to jump into that arena. And so those laboratories have been prototyping different ways to get to those metrics that Dr. Robinson talked about around what we want. What is it that really matters in terms of the data that we're collecting at schools? So lots of performance assessments, defenses of learning, presentations of learning, exhibitions, really building out those guidance documents at the local level around even rubrics that we want to see as students begin to demonstrate these 21st century essential skills.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It was so succinct. We appreciate that, too. I think we're going to see if Lester Young can come on now from New York and give us a little bit more insight, and then we'll get everybody on the Zoom together. Is Lester ready to come up?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
There you are. Hey, Dr. Lester Young, good to see you.
Hi, how is everyone?
We're good, we're good. We're glad that you are beaming in to tell us how New York is tackling this sort of question of moving kids towards 21st century skills and abilities.
So I would, if you just allow me, I'd like to just follow up on a couple of things that my colleagues from Kentucky were talking about. It's interesting, this is my first time interacting with them, but it's amazing to me that some of their strategies are similar to the strategies that caused us to embark on our efforts in New York. And I'll just identify two. The first is that in New York, in 2021, we passed our first diversity, equity, and inclusion policy for the state. And within that policy, we focus on the following components: governance, teaching and learning, family, community engagement, workforce diversity, student support systems, diverse schools and learning opportunities, and student support, discipline, and wellness. The second point that I heard that's similar to what my colleagues are doing in Kentucky was we, too, were, we examined our assessment and accountability system. And in fact, we found that we wanted to move to a system that really supported and helped schools in the 733 school districts in New York and not take that punitive approach. You know, this idea of let's find someone and make them guilty. So we were trying to move away from that. And in fact, I would say, and we're happy to talk about this and share some materials if you're interested, our plan was approved, by the way.
Yay.
But allow me to get right into the heart of what we think is perhaps the most important thing that the New York State Board of Regents can be embarked on. And that's the whole idea of how do we transform our system? How do we move our system to a system that doesn't just work for some children, but actually works for all children in the state of New York? And what the approach that we took, and I believe you all have had copies of our Blue Ribbon Committee report, we started a process in 2019, before the pandemic, of how do we rethink what a New York State high school diploma means? And how do we ensure that when young people complete their K-12 education, that they are actually prepared to be successful at the next level of pursuit, whatever that is? And we believe that the way that we had to do it was actually reexamine everything that we do instructionally to help young people in New York State. And so we've called that our Blue Ribbon Committee Report. And I'm joined by my colleague, Vice Chancellor Judith Chen, who actually directed the Blue Ribbon Committee activities for us during these last several years. So what were some of the priorities of the Blue Ribbon Committee? And there were four. The first is how do we incorporate a system of multiple pathways that would lead to one diploma? So I want to underscore that prior to this, in New York, we had three diplomas. Or I should say, we currently have three diplomas. We have Regents' Diploma with Distinction. We have the Regents' Diploma. And then we have what's called a local diploma. And the challenge for us, quite frankly, is that lots of young people being serviced in special education were working toward and receiving a local diploma, but it wasn't a New York State-endorsed diploma. Therefore, it didn't mean anything. And we felt, quite frankly, that that was wrong. And so we chose as the first priority, how do we develop a multiple pathway that leads to a high school diploma? The second priority area was the whole notion of assessment flexibility. We believe that while results mattered, that there were other ways for young people to demonstrate what they know and can do other than having one exit exam in content areas, which is what we had. And so in order for a young person to earn a Regents' Diploma in New York, they had to take it past five Regents or what we call, they had the four-plus-one option. So they could take four plus an additional Regent in a particular area. The third priority was really to address, how do we meet the needs of those youngsters who were... who were formerly recipients of the Local Diploma? And that area was really, how do we expand meaningful, life-ready credentials? How do we create opportunities for young people that have disabilities, but that they're working toward a diploma that actually means something? That when they graduate from a New York City, I'm sorry, a New York State high school, that they earn a diploma that carries the seal of the New York State? And the fourth priority area was this whole area of culturally responsive curriculum, instruction, and assessments. We felt very strongly that, you know, as all of the research suggests, that culturally responsiveness is appropriate, is just good teaching. But we wanted to make sure that in a state that's becoming increasingly more and more diverse, it's going to continue to be diverse, it's not going to be less diverse, that we have to have better ways of reaching all of our young people. The other point that I would add that's similar to the Kentucky model is that our Blue Ribbon Committee recommended that New York adopt a Portrait of a Graduate. I think that is really the heart of the enterprise. I would say to you that, because I think it's important that we get into the question and answer period, what I like to describe our effort as a transformational initiative in New York State that transforms our system, that was a system that was based on a factory model, that has become a system of maintenance, to transform it to a system that supports each and every young person in New York State and allows them to go as far as their hopes, dreams, and hard work will take them. And we're very serious about that. And so we were really saying, how do we transform New York State's system to a system that really works for each and every young person? The other, the other critical point here, in addition to a system that works, is also to prepare our young people for a world that is changing at a rate that's actually breathtaking. I mean, when you think about the amount of new knowledge that is occurring, and you ask, well, how are our schools organized in a way so that we can begin to provide the kinds of learning opportunities that will prepare youngsters for a world that doesn't even exist now? And so when I talk to superintendents or school leaders, you know, what I constantly say to them is that, you know, we're actually preparing young people for a world that doesn't exist. And when we think about the professions that these young people will be in when they complete their education, they don't exist now. And so how do we organize our schools and our learning opportunities to ensure that each and every young person is actually ready and prepared? So we didn't have a PowerPoint, although we do have lots of materials that we can share. And we, and most of them, everything that I've said to you this afternoon is on our website as well.
Yeah, thank you. And you know, in the 12 recommendations that came out of the Blue Ribbon Commission, there is this focus, as you said, on the Portrait of the Graduate, on the ways in which students might engage in performance assessments as ways to, you know, demonstrate the competencies, to, you know, use multiple approaches. And I know that one of the things that you did in your competitive state grant was to allow for students to engage in the New York Performance Standards Consortium portfolios and career technical portfolios and so on. So I'd just love to hear you take a minute to talk about this question of how you help people demonstrate those kind of competencies.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And thank you for the question. When we talked about the whole issue of assessment flexibility, we were able to do two things. We had what's called a Performance Learning Network Assessment Pilot. We started this as a small initiative that was really designed to create opportunities for local districts and to begin to develop performance-based strategies. And so that initial pilot was so successful that we were able to expand it to a larger initiative statewide that we're going to be beginning in the fall, where we've identified a cohort of schools across the state that will actually be looking at, you know, performance initiatives. They'll be looking at the consortium network that you mentioned. They're also going to be looking at the kinds of CET assessment opportunities. They will look at, you know, international baccalaureate. So they're looking at a myriad of performance-based initiatives across the state. And what we're hoping will come from that will be real opportunities to create for more young people across the state of New York to participate. The other point that I would make about our assessment recommendations, the powerful thing that we did is we decoupled the Regents' Assessments from the graduation requirements. In New York State, students will still have the opportunity to take the exams, but what we, what we did is we decoupled the exam from the diploma requirement. And so going forward, once we, and I, you know, I'm taking this very positively, these recommendations are coming before the board in November. So what we're hoping is that once these recommendations come before the board after November, we'll have a really, a different system that serves the needs of all young people in New York State.
Thank you. That's really interesting. I wonder if we could get all the folks on a panel together now on the Zoom? Can we get the gallery view and see if there are questions from the board? You know what, I think what's interesting about the fact that both of the states and many of the districts are looking at this question of what is the kind of graduate we want and what are the ways in which we create the opportunities to acquire these skills that are not currently part of the way we measure learning is, you know, a big challenge that so many people are taking on. I'm going to see, I'm going to face the board here so I can see who wants to get in with some comments or questions. Francisco, are you pointing at Allison? Or are you wanting to comment? Or what is that?
I just felt Allison wanted to say something about, you know, the whole aspect of performance-based assessment intrigues me in the sense of, you know, taking it at a scale, at a state-level scale, right? Any ideas of how you're utilizing the emerging technologies as a means to capture this performance-based assessment when you're looking at it as a state level? And then, when you look at these portraits, I mean, it is transformational. How do you measure that? How do you measure a critical thinker, right? How is that embedded in these performance assessments that you're thinking about?
Who wants to take that on? Lou, you look like you're ready to go, and then Sharon's ready to go. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was hoping we'd get to get that granular in our conversation. And it's not unlike what Terry's talking about at the high school level in New York. These local laboratories of learning that I mentioned are looking at how we can bring some scientific rigor to the process of local performance accountability, performance assessment and local accountability, so that eventually in our moonshot, assessment and accountability that matters, we will have some very valid and reliable tools. And technology will be a big part of that. At the very minimum, we already have all of our local laboratories, 17 of them, using technology to archive evidence of student learning. So eschew the notion of old-fashioned three-ring binder portfolios, but think about portfolios of evidence of student learning that the student manages herself. Teachers have very little contact, access to, but very little contact with the evidence that students are putting into their portfolio. We also are starting to talk about calibrating performance quality, evidence of student learning across districts, again, building in a rigorous assessment of the work. And then we know, Francisco, that technology is going to have to come to play there, whether it's trusted artificial intelligence or accessing data through our learning management systems. We think that's going to be critical to that, and we're doing a lot of prototyping in that regard right now in Kentucky as well.
Sharon, do you want to add? You're on mute, I think. You're still on mute.
I can't.
Still on mute. I'm not sure what's going on there.
Can the other panelists hear?
Yeah. I don't know if the other panelists can hear or not, but...
There, there. One other point that I want to add is one that Lester pointed out in their efforts and we pointed out as well. Our job as a Department of Education, as we are the agents of the responsible parties, if you will, to see that the department is doing what it should do, is helping that system make room for work that is beyond compliance with what already is and grow the capacity to support the emergent innovation that we are encouraging and support it with the same degree of technical rigor that we require of our, the assessments that we're giving right now. We want validity, we want reliability. If we say you are a critical thinker, we want to know what is the evidence, the validity of that evidence? Who else would recognize it as valid evidence? And does this measure give you a reliable, a data set that you can work with time after time after? Is it a reliable measure? So the technical requirements do not get excused one little bit because it is performance assessment. It requires essentially the same kind of strong consensus building among those who we trust to know. And the articulation of those definitions, the further examination of those definitions over time, it's very, very organic, and it has to be ongoing, but it's work of reliability and validity, but it is just around a different measure.
And let me just, before you speak to that, Lester, let me see if there's any other burning questions, because our time is limited. Yeah. And then, Lester, you could answer both questions at once. We'll stack up some questions, because we have about 10 more minutes probably. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you guys so much for joining in with this. I was really intrigued about the L3 districts that are in Kentucky, and I'm, New York, I'm sure, probably has some innovation zone work going on as well. So my question is, for the L3 districts, what process was used to identify districts as L3, if you will, or to be selected as a learning laboratory district? And once they were identified or selected, what does the ongoing support for those districts look like?
Okay, we're going to hold that question. I'm going to get, see if there's any more, and then we're going to ask the team to select the questions that they want to answer. And I know Lester mentioned a cohort of districts that they've recently selected also, so it's probably analogous. Are there any other burning questions? Yes, Kim?
So related to the L3 piece, oh, I'm sorry. Related to the L3 piece, just what was necessary? Because it sounds like part of what the L3s were enabled to do was to depart from sort of the ongoing set of mandates. And what filled the funding streams that would have been otherwise required to be complied with? Was it state funding that backfilled if it was noncompliant with a federal mandate? Or was it a public-private partnership? But what enabled them to stay?
The first question would be, did that cause any loss of funding? And if so, what backfilled?
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other burning questions? Yes, Sharon? This way we can kind of have a conversation around this.
Hello, and thank you. My question is related to Cynthia's, which is, the question I'm puzzling is, as the, at the state level, our role, I think, is to create the environment and provide the resources for great work to happen. And I'm wondering, so like, the L3 zones are an example of that, right? I'm wondering how, what you think the most important thing, like, what's the most important first change you need to do to take that mindset up, that our work is about enabling good work to be happening at different levels? If that makes sense.
Okay, great. Any other burning questions? Because we're going to... All right, guys. Lester, you were next in the queue, so if you're ready, you could take first crack at whichever ones of those you want to address, and then we'll go to Sharon and Lou.
Well, you know, I want to just say a word about mindsets, because you're absolutely right. You know, this work is not just about doing things, it is also about how do we create the kinds of opportunities where locally we can have those mindset discussions? Because it's really about changing mindset about what is high quality and how does one demonstrate that? And so to get back to that, to that first question, we looked at our assessment approach is how do we expand learning experiences? And how do we create opportunities for young people to provide evidence of their proficiency on our learning standards? So it's, you know, so when we start out with, and I'm sure all of you have a set of standards that you are working toward, and it's in addition to the standards, what's new is that we're also requiring that they demonstrate proficiency on the components of the Portrait of the Graduate. And so what we're hoping in doing both is that we're able to maintain a set of high standards, that there's a level of rigor. But we're also looking at how well they are prepared to be successful at the next level, which is very different than how do you just achieve a score on a Regents' exam? And so that was kind of baked into the approach that we're using. Regarding the funding piece, we began as a public-private partnership. Our initial pilot was funded by the Carnegie Corporation. And then it was so successful that we received a second grant from the US DOE to expand the pilot to more districts across the state. And so there really was no loss in funding, but there are more opportunities for district teams to come together with teams from across the state to begin to support each other in the network performance pilot that we're going to be engaging in next school year or beginning next school year.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go to our Kentucky friends. And you know, Lester used the term "learning experiences for students." And one of the things I loved about the three goals that you said in Kentucky was the term "vibrant learning experiences." And we spent some time this morning talking about, you know, our students feeling... you know, our students feeling both supported in school and engaged and interested in what they're, you know, doing. And I think that's fundamental to what Lester was talking about as well. But let me punt that to you, this set of questions.
So Lou, go ahead and talk about our funding of the L3s and...
Okay, sure, sure. So I mentioned earlier, and I didn't give you the name, Competitive Grant for State Assessments was a US DOE grant called CGSA. So we did get funding there. And so we invited L3s, any district who'd be interested in prototyping in the L3 project when Kentucky United We Learn was first launched. And we did it in three cohorts. And that's where the 17 districts stepped up. That's about 10% of Kentucky districts. And so they were self-selected. We didn't turn anybody away. But we saw some pretty wide range of readiness across those 17, which was great for our prototyping, right? We wanted to meet those who were already in the water, those who were at the edge of the water and those who were saying like, "Where's the water?" So we had that kind of a configuration in those who were willing to give this a try. And so they received, they were very small grants in the range of $40,000 to $50,000 from CGSA and ESAR funds. We put out $26.9 million to our eight regional cooperatives to implement deeper learning strategies as part of our ESAR funding. And so a lot of these things coupled together. And we saw some synergies in the funding around that effort as well. And then I think the original question also said, "What were they allowed to do?" So it was all about prototyping. We didn't, we have an interesting waiver regulation in Kentucky. We can waive any regulation at the state board level except two: life safety and assessment and accountability. So needless to say, the last one just trips us up at every turn. But, so we encourage this kind of "let a thousand roses bloom" mentality around things that we wanted to try. So we saw performance-based transcripts. We saw performance-based credentialing, which has been on the books in Kentucky for some time. I mentioned the digital portfolios. Performance assessment at grades 5, 8, and 12, pretty typically. And none of those required any waivers. But they also didn't get the districts as far as they wanted to go. So it was certainly a limiting factor.
Sharon, did you want to add on any of these questions that we've heard? Because we're going to transition shortly. So I want to give you the last opportunity.
I'm just going to make a political advertisement and say, I think we're going to have to develop a coalition of demanding states to help guide the reauthorization of ESAR. So get ready, California. Look to work with you as allies.
Sharon started off saying she's always been an organizer. You know, she was desegregating lunch counters years ago and doing all kinds of other things. I know you can't control yourself. There's always got to be a next thing. But this, thank you so much. This has been really enlightening, inspiring. I know we've been thinking a lot about these same kind of issues. And we just appreciate you taking time to inform and inspire us. So let's thank our friends from Kentucky and New York.
Linda, can I say hi to my friend Ivy from NASB?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. And we'll see you again. Take care.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Shift over now to our small groups again as our folks go back to their, whatever they were doing before they got to us. Thank you so much. So we're going to go, you know, back into the conversation. Again, you have some questions there in your folder about like what, you know, what are your wonderings? What, you know, things strike you as useful, important to pursue further? Are there things that then should shape goals that we want to begin to think about or objectives for ourselves? And we will take about 20 minutes to talk and then we're going to have an opportunity to report out again and then have a whole group conversation.
We're going to ask you to report in about one minute, so just get your thoughts together. All right. I'm aware that we want to get to next steps. And some of you have flights at two. So I want to be sure that we have a chance both to hear from each group and then to do a little shared conversation. We do need to take an opportunity at the very end for public comments because every item has public comment. So we're going to try to keep the ball rolling here. Who would like to report out first? Ready?
Some ideas is how can CTC explore competency-based credentialing? Just a thought. How can we develop or...
Somebody who'd be willing to scribe a little bit across. Like on one of those? Oh, okay. We didn't do our post-its.
I'll take those.
Thank you. You can do post-its for us? So competency-based creden-- well, you don't take them until he's ready for them to be taken. All right, go ahead, Francisco.
How can we develop or aggregate existing California graduate portraits?
Either develop a portrait and/or aggregate.
Aggregate, what's existing already. How can we incentivize equitable grading methods?
Grading?
Grading methods, yes. And then how do we, as a system, get better at assessing soft skills such as critical thinking? And at the same time, how could we ensure that we have these soft skills embedded in our perhaps A through G requirements?
Good luck with that. Any other additions from this table group? Okay, great. And what about this table group?
We have post-its also.
All right.
We'll write them and put them up there.
Great, good, good, good. Make sure everybody's got the post-its that they need.
Okay, very similar.
Feeling like we're in a deficit, you know, thing here, like we have to crawl out.
Different pathways for different learners.
Difference from standard. Like, how far are we from met and exceeded the standard? I know.
So, oh, I was going to read this one. That's not ours. That's the one I was going to put up there. All righty. So areas that we thought would be important to explore and look at a little bit deeper in the future, going back also to that portrait profile of a graduate, we felt that that would be very important to really start exploring at the state level. And nestled under that would be how we can connect things such as performance-based assessments, portfolio, graduation, using portfolios. All of those different types of things could be tied in at the local level if so desired. But we really felt that having that portrait or profile of a graduate and those competencies needed to be in place so that these different pieces could be anchored into it. And also so we could look at our system as a whole and make some determination with what type of things are happening that support that at the local level and where might we, again, have obstacles that we need to further explore. We talked about having some type of a way to encourage innovation through innovation pilots, looking at bringing forward, again, what that might look like, anchoring on the thoughts and ideas from Kentucky and their L3 districts, how might we be able to incentivize or allow for something along that line to be supported? And lastly, strategic planning to really look at aligning our current systems to, again, see where that supports this vision of whole-child education, ensuring that we're preparing our students for the world that doesn't exist. And again, where might there be gaps or what things may need to be tweaked? So a lot of those little discrete pieces we were talking about, like the LCAP or CTE completion and all of those pathway completion, might nestle under that area of aligning our system tighter towards the vision we would have for that portrait or profile of a graduate.
Boy, great minds think alike. So those post-its might almost capture ours, but we're going to do our own post-its because we want to be closer to the standard, right? So we were really also grabbed by the "jobs for a world that doesn't exist yet" phrase. I think that was Lester who may have talked about that. And talked about, well, what is, well, how do we get there, right? Because it means shifting from passive learning and sort of spitting back facts to students being proactively engaged in managing their own learning. And project-based learning is a key element of that, and how do we support that? We also felt that it would be good for us to engage in a portrait of a graduate. And not, we kind of clarified not to foist that on districts that already have done that work and are organized around it, but to guide our own thinking about this kind of sort of strategic planning, like, okay, how are we making progress to this at the state level? And then for districts that have not undertaken that, it might be an inspiration or, you know, a default starting place for them to engage in that kind of work as well. Because then you could think about, well, how does that then line up with what we're doing in the curriculum and assessments and other things that we're responsible for? Gabriella is very engaged with the smarter balanced assessment processes. So she knows a lot about what it looks like. And so we asked her, like, you know, how close are we with the kind of assessments we have? Her answer was the performance tasks are the best part of it. Basically, they're the closest. And that we could continue to improve the performance assessment elements there. And of course, in science, we're just getting ready to take that up. But also to be cognizant that when we're thinking about any kind of assessments, students need multiple opportunities, right? That we have to get out of this idea that there's a day and then you take a test and then you have a score and then that tells you what you need. And that the way in which the assessments that are used to move in a competency-based arena have to be different and broader than what we currently do in testing. Teacher leadership and learning around this approach to learning is really important. And so at some point, we have to think about that. How do you build capacity for getting students engaged in this kind of learning? The notion of habits of mind and habits of thinking, which often accompany the work around Portrait of a Graduate, is what actually allows you to be successful in any endeavor. So this question about how do you prepare students for jobs that don't yet exist has to do with, you know, what are the ways in which you're developing those habits of mind and those habits of thinking? And then that gets you back to how do you assess and support that work? We had a conversation about what makes a kid actually want to come to school and the importance of the curriculum and assessment work that we do, the pathways and other things, to include choice and relevance and real-world connections. We did stumble on the realization, again, that the high school really is set up the most like a factory and having a way to help people redesign the high school may be an important element or some incentives or models or ways of learning about what's possible. And then the last thing that we talked about was the possibilities for portfolios that could get communicated to colleges for admission, for, you know, an electronic support system for that, a way to continue to think about how AI can be helpful in that work was also our sort of, maybe not our closing thought, but what did I miss? I got it all. All right. All right. So a lot of similarity across. So this is our opportunity to kind of talk across the groups and think for a few minutes, within maybe the next 15 minutes, if we're extremely mindful of our flights that are coming up, to what we want to think about as cross-cutting ideas, next steps, questions, other things we ought to be pursuing in future study sessions, you know, how do we want to manage our own learning around this? Thoughts? Francisco?
I would love to know more about the science assessment, once it begins to form itself. And is there a possibility we can use this new assessment as a template for other assessments?
That's an interesting idea. And, you know, a couple of, both of those states had gotten competitive state grants. That's what we were talking about yesterday that we've just applied for, for the science. So if we're successful in getting it in, how could they not give it to California? Then I think that, you know, that question will be directly on the table. So, good question. Aidé?
Yes, just to dovetail on Francisco's comment about the competency-based credentials, that perhaps in some cases, we had talked about this a while back, our micro, or badges, right? You know, like little micro badges that can be used and maybe revisiting that.
And we could be talking to our colleagues at the CTC. Aidé is our liaison to the CTC, but there are states, North Carolina is among them, that are really looking at micro-credentials. And in some of these areas where we have the most difficulty, like the art and music conversation that came up, you know, you could imagine a performance-based way or a short, shorter-than-taking-a-whole-new-major approach to getting a, some kind of a badging. You know, when you mentioned competency-based credentials, I was initially thinking about competency-based credentials for students as well, right? Then there's a lot of effort, you know, to get beyond seat time as the only variable for confirming that you've mastered something. We were talking about the Met, and a lot of what they do is sort of figuring out how to, credential, the competencies that you've mastered along the way. Sharon?
I was just thinking, so your question was where we might go with from here, right?
Yeah.
I love the idea of continuing to think about, continuing to find models of really good work and hearing about them and then asking ourselves, what can we do at the state level to support and grow that work, whether it's to do more or in some cases do less to grow and support that work?
Yeah, one of the things about this sort of innovation zone or innovation district idea that I think is important is that if one does something like that, you don't want it to stay in just a few places. You want to actually have an obligation for informing both policy and the learning of others.
Yeah, my point was more like, how do we learn, you know, if the work is happening at a certain level, how do we then ask ourselves and those people the question, what do you need from us so that it can, it can grow and thrive in other places? Or you can do this work more deeply?
Yeah.
So creating the resources and environment for that, for that to be more universal rather than exceptional.
Yeah. And as a constant way of doing the work, yeah. Other...
I don't know if we're able to answer this today, but I was just curious about what would be next steps as a state for us to create a portrait of a learner? And if, you know, is that something that can be done within the realm of the State Board of Education and, or come to the board for approval? Or, again, I don't know if we can answer that, but...
I think we can explore, you know, what the avenues are that are possibilities and then maybe come back around with that. Brenda?
Yeah. I just, in light of sharing the information that was shared today and giving other superintendents maybe the courage or more information on how they can become innovative, maybe if we had future guests, as Sharon mentioned, maybe it could be a bigger webinar that you can invite superintendents to also just make a point of inviting them so that they can hear, because it might ignite some of them to have the courage to reach out to some of these other superintendents. And maybe they have a burning desire to do something innovative and it may just invigorate them to want to do, to pursue. So maybe just find a way to, just get the word out to more districts and superintendents.
Yeah. And, you know, we have a lot of learning, you know, conferences and webinars and other ways to focus people on learning from each other that can be more focused on future-ready schools, for example. Other... Yeah.
I think, just kind of going back to some of the things we've talked about, really looking at what that profile of a graduate would be and utilizing those profiles of a graduate or portrait of a graduate that are already out there, looking at the districts, and really looking at what the commonalities are from all of those different profiles that may currently exist. And then using that as a base to build from or to synthesize, to set the view from a state level could be very helpful. And underneath that, I don't know if underneath is the right way to visualize it, once that's there, it can serve as the anchor for what innovation can be incentivized and how to allow for districts to identify and say, hey, you know, we have some innovations we want to try and do, and looking at a process to allow for that to happen.
It's a good way to get started. Any other questions, thoughts? Kim? And then Anya, it looks like you were about to... Go ahead, Anya.
Yeah, I was going to say with the profile of a graduate or a learner, one involves students in those conversations about what they want to, how they envision themselves in the future and the skills that they see themselves needing, as well as once you've kind of determined those skills, making sure that's not just a poster or just, you know, something that, a graphic, but actually conveying that to students as these are the skills that we expect you to graduate and leave school with, and here's why they're important, especially when you're looking at that piece where students are bored or tired or don't want to come to school, but here is why this is important and this is how we engage students. So I think that's important. I think the assessments piece is also really important for that, making it so you're applying those skills, because students will forget information the next year, you know, after they pass out of a class or a grade. But you'll remember those experiences where you're applying those skills and the knowledge you've learned, and I think, I think that's really valuable. So I would emphasize that going forward as well.
The comments earlier about the...
The, the comments earlier about the, the portrait of a graduate, I think, gives rise to a conversation about what are the systems that we need to make sure are working together in support of building the competencies of that future graduate of a California school. And that, I think, is what's alluded to on the sticky notes around what strategic planning might make sense for the future for the board to think about, building the scaffolding underneath that portrait. The other innovation piece, I think, that was a recurrent theme was thinking about how to lift up local indicators around a notion of a more competency based assessment that is, goes beyond SBAK. And I think that speaks to both the idea of not just what did you learn and what is sort of demonstrated on a test, but also what future opportunities are, and future pathways are open to students as a result of having gained that competency, which gets to both post-secondary but also career.
I just wanted to add to the conversation and maybe just reiterate one piece. I think it would be really important for us to look at current systems, what's working, similar to what Kim said, what's working, what's not, but look at what we already have and see where things may need to be streamlined, what pieces are we expecting to be done at the LEA level that perhaps don't need to be done in that same way at this time. So having exploration of what currently exists to see if it's still what's needed as we have this future focused vision for schools and for students.
You're talking about really doing an excavation of the geological dig of regulations that accumulates over many, many decades, right? And it, and much of what is embedded in that is rooted in the factory model that we inherited and then we regulate around that. And so, there's a lot. There's a lot there. Sharon?
I just wanted to echo that, that the, the one, like, in my head, thinking from the practitioner level, for us to spend time on developing something new, if that's at the expense of us spending time thinking about what's out there that's actually useful and what isn't, I would personally root for the latter.
Mm-hmm.
Over the former.
Particularly since the former might result in more.
More, yeah, that's, that's my.
More layering on, yes.
So like, or if there's a way that the portrait of the graduate somehow creates a coherence to all of the things that already exist and so therefore makes it simpler because you can get it in a big picture, fantastic. But if it, if it just becomes another thing that schools feel like they need to think through and work on and, I'm not sure, I think it's worth our time.
Well, and I, I would agree with you that we should not think of that as a mandate or as something that's another thing coming down, but as a way to, to our own strategic thinking and planning around to what extent is what we have consistent with, supportive of, and to what extent does that, you know, suggest that we need to think differently about any aspect of the system. Yeah. Jim?
I would echo a lot of what's been said so far, but continuing to lift up the voice of our students, because we're creating a world or creating careers and jobs that don't exist right now and preparing students for those jobs that we don't even know about yet, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Any other, yes, Kim, and then back to Allison.
It goes without saying, but I feel like it's an important thing to reiterate that.
A critical role of, of state oversight and encouragement and incentivizing is as we think about jobs that, the jobs for the future that have not yet been invented, that we don't inadvertently forget to build in equity from the beginning so that the jobs for the future don't inadvertently box out people who have always lived for this from opportunity.
Well, that's right. And I think, you know, the Compton examples that we, Dr. Brawley didn't get deeply into all of the work they're doing around STEM, STEAM and project based learning and so on, which is what that middle school's being internationally recognized for. But, you know, it's really thinking about what kinds of skills you're likely to need in the future and approaching that from a very purposeful and equitable frame of reference, rather than, quite often, you know, you get little innovations here, there and the other place. I mean, we heard from folks today who are in districts that are serving students that have often been left behind, but often the innovations go to the places that have more resources and we don't have a system to then think about how the good stuff gets to everyone, right? So I think that's a really important point. Allison, are you waiting?
Yeah, this.
I'm losing track, so correct me if I missed someone.
This might sound a little off the wall, but I, I think it was Superintendent Masuda today who spoke about collecting street level data or map level data as opposed to just satellite level data. And so I know when I think about our state dashboards, a lot of times we're collecting that high level, highest level data, because it's valid and reliable and it's standardized and everything else.
Standardized does not always mean valid, nor does it always mean reliable. Just want to say that, because those words get used a lot.
Okay.
But it is standardized.
Thank you, thank you. But I do think, and what's going to sound a little wonky is I think when, when I used to supervise schools, one of the things I would always look like, look at is I would look at the eyes of the kids as they were walking to the campus, to see if their eyes were like lit up and excited to come to school that day. And I think it was our superintendent from Lindsay who said in their mission, one of the things that, you know, one is students who want to come back to school the following day. And I think that if there are ways in our work as we move forward as the state board that we could think about highlighting any data points, giving them maybe different weight, like the data you shared with the Healthy Kids Survey, the percent of students who have a trusting relationship in high school. I don't, sometimes those data points don't have the same kind of weight that other data points carry as we think about our accountability system. So I just want to raise that as maybe a, something for exploration.
Well, you know, we have been examining the question about student surveys.
The common questions.
And we've now required that they be annual and I think we probably required that they be on the LCAP reporting. It's just another five pages on the LCAP, right? But, but, you know, it is a way to say that that's important and we, you know, we could think about are there better ways to, to underscore the importance of student voice and to get that raised up. But, you know, to your, to your point, that is fundamental, right? It's really fundamental whether kids are in a context where they feel supported and happy about being in school, that's like. And if you see the parent surveys, you know, the number one thing parents want for their kids is to be engaged and to be happy in school. It's like they say, more of that, right? So.
And the point you brought up about them adding boredom to their, to the survey.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting. I learned that when I was doing that research. The other thing that we have a lot of that we don't question, I think a lot of what we're saying is we should question, you know, things from this framework, like whatever it is that we're doing or whatever's in the system, we should question it and, and ask, is it promoting the goals that we want? And one of the things that's very common is the notion that came in with Common Core standards of, we're teaching the grade level standards and we're doing it quite often with a pacing guide. And we know that kids don't learn at the same rate and the same way, and yet we require teachers both to do that and to meet the needs of every kid. And we haven't resolved that fundamental tension and conflict in the directives that come to schools. And I was a high school teacher and I experienced that in my high school teaching from the very beginning and it has, you know, been something that's been a passion of mine ever since. How do you enable teachers to actually meet kids where they are? Because that's what's going to allow them to grow more rapidly. There's a lot of evidence around it. So anyway, there's a lot of things we take for granted in the discourse that are actually problematic to the achievement of the goals. And I think we just have to bring that lens of, okay, what is actually going to enable student learning? And of course, the, using grade level standards and using the pacing guide has an important goal and it's a reason why people want to do it, because it comes from an equity concern, right? But then we also know the way people learn is not that they don't, they don't learn in the same way and at the same pace. So the standardization assumption behind a lot of what we do is often antithetical to the goal that we're trying to achieve. And we're just going to have to really wrestle with these dilemmas that are in the system in so many ways. And think about how do you promote the equity goal and ensure that kids are getting what they need and not, you know, being taught down to and so on, but also enable them to learn. There's a study done on math that showed that the kids that were allowed to be taught at, where they needed it, rather than being forced to teach to grade level standards, gained seven times more growth than the folks who were just being moved through the pacing guide, the kids whose teachers felt they had to move them through the pacing guide. So we, we just are going to have to start to wrestle with some of these dilemmas if we really, really want to get, you know, all kids coming to school feeling good about it and, you know, achieving maximally. And I say that because, just as an example, because at the state board level, we're dealing with these kinds of macro kinds of guidance that when they get down to the level of the student or the child can be more problematic than we realize, or at the level of the teacher and the principal. Anyway, on that note, any, any other thoughts that folks have about next steps? I want to move us towards public comment, which is our last item of the day. I just think this is a fabulous discussion. Jim, were you about to add one more thing? Go ahead, you can do it. I see you ready.
I, I'm remembering the comment about local indicators and your recommendation flipping that and how local indicators are so much more meaningful and can drive the community and students. Thank you.
It's kind of an analogy too, to what, you know, we need for kids. Well, that's a good point on which to end and we're going to continue to kind of figure out how we continue to think and learn together and study and make progress. We thank our guests who came, we still have some of them with us and those who sat through this with us today, and we appreciate that. And at this point, we're going to open the phone line for public comment. If you are worried about catching your flight, I know there's a little bit of anxiety in some places, you know, should feel free if you need to. We're going to open the phone line for the public comment queue. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the slide that should be showing up, but I don't see it yet. Is there a slide, is the public comment slide coming up? And then of course we encourage you to state your name and affiliation for the record and turn down the volume on your computer speaker if you are watching the live feed and then we'll see if there's any public comment in the room. And I'm going to look to my state board colleagues here to manage this part of the process. Oh, we do. Shelley.
First, Shelley.
Turn on the mic.
I'm going to sit here, I guess.
Board President and Board Member Shelley Spiegel Coleman from Californians Together. What an honor it was for me to be here and to listen to your conversation and to hear from our presenters. What I loved the most was looking at the potential. Every presenter talked to us about what is the potential and it's our job to make sure that we get to that, that we know how to get to that potential. So in the second conversation that you had, I had a great conversation with the superintendent from Lindsay, because I said, everybody's talking about a high school portrait graduate, but what does that mean in K and one and TK and elementary school? I worry about our state indicators that are very secondary oriented. And he had such a wonderful, wonderful, they do, they have, they have rubrics and TK and K students, they know, they tell us what they are able to do to meet those criteria that they have. So I want us, when we think about it, not to think, because that's what we've done with our old system, think about the high school, but build the whole system from elementary.
Thank you, your time is up.
Because that's what's going to make the big difference. And lastly, I want to say, you know, I would have to say one thing about being able to perform in multiple languages when we do our performances, being able to do in multiple languages.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have four others who have already signed up to speak in person. If I could please have Diana Vu, Lindsay Tornatorre, LiAngela Reed, and Roman Sterns. Please line up where the public comment microphone is. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Doctor, good afternoon, state board members. Diana Vu, on behalf of the Association of California School Administrator. AXA really appreciates the board's discussion today, especially as it focuses on the California Way at a local level. We encourage the state board to maintain this momentum of an innovative thinking and look forward to future board agenda items that could facilitate ongoing dialogue and opportunities to spotlight LEA achievements, challenges and student successes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. You have one minute.
Good afternoon, board members. Lindsay Tornatorre, on behalf of the California County Superintendent, would like to echo the appreciation from my colleague from AXA. Thank you for, to the, to the panelists, to the state board staff and to all of you for letting us listen in to your really innovative and learner centered thinking. Really leaving today with a real appreciation and inspiration towards what we could achieve together. And also would like to definitely ask to see the momentum continue. We'd love to see additional board items. To echo Member Olken and Member Lewis's comments around best practices to highlight and also an intention to include more administrators, especially district and county superintendents. And finally, another topic maybe to add to this discussion is the question around one coherent federal and state accountability system and the ways in which this might get some things caught in the middle of being able to innovate. This is a topic top of mind for the county superintendents, especially around our juvenile court and community schools that we operate and DAS schools. Thank you again. Hope everyone stays cool on your commute and thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, LiAngela Reed, on behalf of the Small School Districts Association. I want to echo the comments of my colleagues from AXA and from the county SOOPS and the inspiration that was provided today, the vision, the opportunity for the future. I really appreciated the conversation of not just a portrait of a graduate, but a portrait of a learner. I think that's really important. In Smalls, we do well because parents are involved, because they're all one. I think if we, the more we have that integration, the better we will be. And I think you all really showed how the importance of relationships. So it's not just data, it's that. And so we, the Smalls look forward, we would love to provide any kind of presentations or examples for what's going on in Smalls, we're pretty proud of it. And, and we also would ask that we look to how we can expand it. So we don't have pockets of excellence, but we have lines of excellence. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Roman Sterns, Director of Scaling Student Success, a California partnership that nurtures the developmental whole child. We, I loved everything I heard today. It's wholly consistent with our, our policy white paper, which I'm not sure, I hope, I think is in your packets, but I can share afterwards. The panels were both exceptional, surfaced a lot of the topics that emerged from our policy white paper. And a couple of sources of information that might be helpful as we look forward, there were a couple of questions about where might be a starting point for establishing a statewide portrait of a graduate that is voluntarily adopted in local districts that haven't yet gone through the work. There are currently, on our website, we have an interactive map of all the districts with portraits of a graduate, there are about 82, I think, currently. West Ed Forus, about a year ago, did an analysis of 54, 55 of those and consolidated. So we have that to start with, could be a good starting point. But there are many other opportunities here, I think, that emerged today in terms of flipping the dashboard.
Your time is up.
The local indicators on top, et cetera. Thank you.
And we do have two callers in the queue. I will open the phone line now. Caller with the last four digits, six, seven, six, seven, six, four, you are now live. Please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is Dina Wilson, Director of Accountability Support and Monitoring for Los Angeles County Office of Education. Thank you so much for holding a study session on this important topic. Our county office, as well as my county office's colleagues across the state, play a key role in supporting our LEAs and operationalizing the state board's vision provided in the California Way. We'd love to have been with you all for the discussion here today and we look forward We would love to have been with you all for the discussion here today, and we look forward to engaging with you around this topic as we move forward. County offices of education provide technical assistance to all LEAs in understanding the accountability system and utilizing the data to make informed decisions. We provide professional development to build capacity in areas such as MTSS and serving the needs of specific student groups such as our English learners. We also ensure district LCAPs are developed in response to identified needs, address educational partner input, and meet the legal requirements set forth by the state. LACO is proud of our LEAs and the work that we do to support them, improving student outcomes. We have a wonderful presentation this morning from Dr. Brawley of Compton USD. Our office is proud to have worked alongside Compton over the past several years.
Next caller with the last four digits, 8256, you are now live, please start your public comment. You have one minute.
Hi, this is Robert Van Wueren from Children Now. Children Now is super excited that the board is taking on this discussion of the role of the state in fostering innovation. As you take on that role, we want you to recognize that there likely will need to be safeguards built in to provide some, some guardrails for the students with the greatest needs. For example, as you discussed minimum standards for a portrait of a graduate, what would that mean and what would be the equity assurance that Kim Patrilo-Bronson was raising in her comments as an example? There's a lived experience that often students with the greatest need get just the minimum requirement and sometimes even less. California currently has the largest achievement gap by income for eighth-grade math and second-largest semination for fourth-grade reading. We point you to a fantastic paper by Dr. Darlene Hammond and her LPI colleagues on the California Way and some of the recommendations that are specific to the board in that. Continue refining current policies and deeper implementation.
Thank you, caller.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment for item number 17.
So with that little public service announcement, I do want to close the meeting. Brooks, are you over there because you want to say something or just try to close down the meeting? I do want to ask my Vice President Glover Woods if she likes to add any thoughts. You can see that we had a great time doing our team teaching today and sending our little notes back and forth, and we really appreciate the enthusiasm that everyone brought to the table. Do you want to add a couple of thoughts as we close out?
Very, very brief, just want to thank everyone who came and shared and presented and the board for engaging in the conversation, and I'm quite excited about where we are going as a state, and I know we'll be able to do that together. Thank you.
And to answer Jim's question, we are going to consolidate all the notes, we're going to figure out like what we have heard and get back to you and have a conversation about next steps, and we will continue the process. So this is just the beginning, not the end. We hope everybody, you know, makes your flights and has a good trip home, may the force be with you, and we will see you in September. We adjourn the meeting at 12:45.